All right, we're gonna get started. Call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Ms. Oliver, you take the role?
Dr. Cavassos.
Present.
Ms. Chen.
Here.
Mrs. Donner.
Here.
Mr. Hosang.
Here.
Mrs. Hunley.
Here.
Mr. Riffel.
Present.
Mrs. Ordigo.
And can I have a board member certify closed session, please?
Madam Chair, certified to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Thank you, Mr. Riffel, for the second.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. And can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner. Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Heron for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In advance of Thanksgiving, 200 WJC schools' families receive cooking kits from SHIP, our school health initiative program. We participate in SHIP's Everything But The Bird Cooking Challenge. Student chefs use farm-to-table ingredients and other fall staples to cook up tasty treats. Let's learn more about the challenge and the partnership that helped bring the cooking kits together.
Today, we're at Kelbrun Farm, and we are packing 200 SHIP chef kits filled with local produce. This is a cooking challenge where you get everything but the bird, so that means that you're getting fresh produce from Kelbrun Farm. They've got sweet potatoes, apples, winter squash, some green tomatoes, some collards, and then cranberries and stuffing. And the kids make inventive side dishes for Thanksgiving. This program is about teaching kids the life scale of cooking with healthy locally grown vegetables.
It's a great experience to be able to educate people, to let them know exactly where their produce is coming from.
And the whole family is also benefiting from this whole experience. Siblings are wearing their little chef hats together and cooking together.
I hope all of the students that participated with SHIP Chef this time around learn to try some vegetables that they've not had before, to get in the kitchen and really explore and realize just how simple it truly is to prepare some of your, you know, local seasonal fall flavors.
We have families that said, you know, this is the first time my child cooked, and now they love cooking. Kids who are creating their own dishes with the ingredients that they've been given pretty much by themselves. They're really exploring these foods in a hands-on way and making it personal and almost developing a connection to these vegetables. That translates into them actually tasting and trying and loving these healthy dishes. And hopefully, you know, continuing to eat these great foods the rest of their whole lives.
It is just a great experience to be able to share what we have. We would love for any of you all to come out for a visit. Come see us.
As winter break draws closer, I wish all students, families, staff, and the WJC schools' community a happy and healthy holiday season. Schools and offices will be close to the public from December 23 through January 3. And we look forward to seeing students and staff back again on Monday, January 6. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Were there any reports or anything from board members? I didn't ask. Okay. Then we will move on to item 5.01, review purchase requests to Optech to support the renovation of Lafayette High School Building 900.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Snipes will present this item this evening.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. Tonight's proposed agenda item supports Goal 6 of the strategic plan and is being brought for your review and consideration. It is the review of purchase requests to Optech under Annual Contract Number 2115019 to support the renovation of the Lafayette 900 Building for a total amount of $133,196. As you are aware, School Board policy requires purchases that exceed $100,000 to be approved by the School Board. The renovation of the Lafayette 900 Building is nearing the final phase of completion, and we would like to install various technology systems, including data com, audio/video, intercom, paging, and access and security. This project excludes network switches, networking backboards, conduits, and pathways, and fire stops. In addition, as the total cost of the requested technology purchased is $133,196, funds are allocated within the construction budget. The purchase will be made using the Division Purchasing Contract, again, Number 2115019. The superintendent recommends the board review the purchase request to Optech in the amount of $133,196. And due to the construction timeline, consider approving the request tonight, on December 10, 2024. Can I answer any questions?
Mr. Snipes, are there any questions from board members? Now, this is a quick turnaround, so hopefully you've had a chance to look at it before the meeting, but no questions? Okay. All right, we will move on to item 6.01, audit report for year, for the year that ended June 30, the fiscal year that ended June 30, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ewen will introduce our guest for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Annually, we are required to have an audit of our financial records performed by an external audit firm. This evening, Mr. Zach Lamorda, Audit Manager with Cherry Becker, is here to present the results of our audit for the year ended June 30, 2024.
Thank you, Renee.
It's a long road, but you could start now.
I appreciate it. Well, like I said, happy to meet some of you. I know some of you I met last year as well. I'm Zach Lamorda, manager here with Cherry Becker, that performed the audit for both the schools and the school activity funds for this year. Before I kind of get into the presentation, I'll just kind of go through some of the results we had, you know, required communications we have each year, and things in that nature. I just wanted to give a quick thanks to Renee, Kelsey, Victoria, and I'm sure there are plenty of other people that help you all out during the audit. This year went very well in terms of the audit, expressly, you know, we had our first year last year where it didn't go as smoothly, and then we got here this year where it was a very smooth process. You know, it was a great product that came out from this year, and it was just, you know, very impressive overall with all the help that you guys were able to provide. So just want to give you a quick thanks before we jumped into this. It was a very smooth audit, so. Try one more time.
There you go.
So just a quick agenda for this. So I want to introduce the team, go through some of the results of the audit, both the schools and the school activity funds, go through some other required communications we have related to independence and some other matters that we discuss as well. And then at the very end, we'll talk about some upcoming financial reporting changes that are going to be occurring both next year and in future years, and save some time for questions as well that we'll be able to answer. Starting off with the team, Laura Harden is our engagement director. Of course, she wasn't able to make it today, but she was the same director we had last year as well. Rob Churchman, what we do during our process, we have what we call a second partner review. It's kind of like a quality control process as a kind of second set of eyes on the audit itself and the work related to it. And Rob Churchman, who hasn't worked with the governments for many, many, many years, was our second reviewer on this one. Of course, myself, and then Stephen Miller was our senior who helped out with a lot of the testing throughout the year. For overall results of the audit, we issued our report for November 26, 2024, for the schools' audit, and then we issued the school activity funds audit October 22, 2024. Both audits had an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can get. There's nothing better than the unmodified opinion, so no issues within either of the audits that we noted. We also performed some work over compliance related to certain specifications that relate to, you know, Virginia government specifically and also just kind of, you know, county, cities, and towns specifically as well. During that process, we didn't know instances of noncompliance related to that, and we also didn't know material weaknesses related to internal controls under the government auditing standards. And I'll get into a little bit what that material weakness word kind of means. Overall, so some internal control communication. In our performance of the audit, we look at internal controls over the kind of financial reporting process, but we're not really designed to get enough reliability on the internal controls to really express an opinion on those, you know, separately. So it's a part of our process that we review the internal controls, get an understanding of them, understand the design, make sure they're operating properly, but we do not express a specific opinion on those internal controls. It's kind of a part of our audit, not the sole focus. So our consideration is fairly limited. Like I said, the audit procedure is not really designed to identify every single deficiency that might occur within internal control, but as those deficiencies might pop up, that's where we communicate with the finance team management, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page, they understand what those items might be, and then where, you know, needed, take corrective action to fix those items. We consider a deficiency in internal control is when either design or the operation of that control just does not allow, you know, management or employees in their normal course of, you know, performing their responsibilities and roles to help kind of prevent or detect any misstatements or errors that could occur in the financial reporting process. So if something where like that were to occur, that's where a deficiency would come out from. Overall, for both the, for the schools' audit, there are no, for both the schools and the school activity fund audit, there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which I'll talk about here in a second. But related to the school activity funds, which this is the audit related to the kind of cash basis statements of each individual school, we usually have some recommendations related to that, just due to the nature of the transactions involved for the school activity funds, a lot of cash basis, just a lot of, you know, activity for each school. So we usually provide some control recommendations we see throughout and speak with management for. First one is just continuing training for school board, you know, on school board policies for individual bookkeepers, you know, people who work in each of the different schools, just to make sure that they're, you know, familiar with the policies, familiar with the procedures, making sure that, you know, everything is followed to the T during the year. So that's one recommendation we have. And then our second one is our lack of segregation of duties. So just due to the nature of kind of the school's finance team, there's usually a very small team in each school, usually just a principal and a bookkeeper. So that itself kind of presents inherent risk related to segregation of duties, where you just really have to make sure that, you know, there's a different person approving something versus a different, you know, person preparing something. And for the most part, when we're looking through the school's transactions, we really didn't know huge issues related to the segregation of duties. There was always a, you know, proper reviewer, proper approver, proper prepare. It's just an inherent risk that we like to point out that this could happen, just to be aware of, you know, in future years, to make sure that, you know, there are some segregation of those duties within each school. So no huge concerns related to any of these. You know, they don't cause our audit opinion to change at all. These are just kind of considerations we have that we make throughout the audit. Overall, so we have corrected and uncorrected misstatements that sometimes occur during the audit. As you'll see up there, none were noted during this year, which is always great. That means there are basically no audit adjustments identified during the process, and there was no audit adjustments that were also just passed on during the year as well. So everything was very clean and looked very good. Going on to some of our required communications, and probably the next couple of slides are going to be on these. Overall, so management is responsible for the selection and use of just appropriate accounting policies throughout the year, and those policies are described in the Schools Act for within Note 1. And for the school activity funds, it's within Note 2 of their financial statements. That's where you'll see some of those policies described in. There are no new accounting policies that would need to be adopted for this year, and no application of existing, you know, accounting policies changed significantly from the prior year as well. And we don't know inappropriate accounting policies or practices. As part of our audit, we also look through and just ensure that we're aware of and make sure the accounting is correct for any related parties that the schools may have. This, here'd be a variety of things. Related party is a pretty general term, but usually for governments, it's usually the primary government, maybe other subsidiaries of that primary government as well that the schools may work with, you know, board members, schools, whatever it might be. And we kind of perform certain procedures over related parties. Luckily, we noted none of the following for this year, which is, you know, all the related parties were disclosed to us, so there was no undisclosed related parties that were discovered during the audit. All the significant related party transactions that would occur during the year, they were all properly approved, had a business purpose, and, you know, followed all sorts of policies and procedures that the schools have in place to make sure that those are kind of allowable transactions. There is no, as mentioned, no transaction that lacked any, you know, true business purpose. There are no noncompliance with any laws or regulations that surround these types of transactions, and there were no difficulties in identifying the related parties. So we usually work with the finance team management to ensure that we understand who the related parties may be, and we had no issues in determining who those were. Some further notes, so we also just look at to see if there's any transactions that would lack any sort of authoritative guidance for any reason, but we noted none of that. So all the significant transactions that occurred during the year were recognized, both, you know, based properly on the authoritative guidance and also in the proper period, so there were no issues there. We also look to see if there's any significant unusual transactions that occur during the year. These are just kind of what I would call outside the normal course of business for schools that we usually kind of pick out separately and maybe provide some additional procedures over, but we noted no such transactions during the year. Some further items, so we also look at significant estimates that happen during the year, just because these kind of provide, or these inherently have a lot more judgment related to them that the finance team and management have to make, you know, related to these inputs and assumptions that go into these balances that I list here. We focus a bit more on the more sensitive estimates that might cause a significant change in any like balances or disclosures, things of that nature. So the two that we look at the most are the capital appreciable lives, as well as the actuarial calculations for OPEB assets, liabilities, and deferred inflows. You know, we go through each and analyze each of the, you know, inputs and assumptions used for each of those categories and significant estimates, you know, evaluate the factors used to come up with those estimates, ensure that they're reasonable based on, you know, our knowledge and what we've seen with the schools as well. And, you know, we don't know issues with those estimates. Last kind of qualitative aspect here, just overall statement that the financial statements disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. So things that we look for when we're reviewing the averages, making sure that, you know, it's understandable, it's consistent with last year where it should be, and that all the disclosures that are there that are needed, and we don't know issues there. And then for the school activity funds specifically, there's just certain financial statement disclosures that are just a bit more sensitive, just due to their significance in the statements, that just might be a bit more important to a user than the rest. For the school activity funds, that would be in Note 2, which just describes that the school's financial statements are presented on a cash basis of accounting, as opposed to that, you know, accrual or modified accrual for the school activity funds, just due to the kind of nature of that entity. So, but there's no certain financial statement disclosures that, you know, to bring up specifically for the schools themselves. Some further considerations that we make, both at the beginning of the audit and throughout, just to ensure that we're independent from the schools as a whole and, you know, the various related parties that the schools has as well. In doing so, sometimes we perform these non-test services, you know, for the schools. These are called kind of services in conjunction with the audit, so not specifically related to the audit, but services that we kind of help with on the outside of the audit. We performed two of them this year, and not really anything specific, more kind of continuing the assistance for. For the school activity fund, we help kind of prepare the financial statements related to those, so the footnotes, disclosures, balances, the supplemental schedules, et cetera. We help prepare those. And then we also provided some assistance or continuing assistance over GASB 87 and GASB 96, which were two standards that were implemented in prior years, just to make sure they continue to be, you know, properly implemented. And then for all these non-test services, basically, management takes responsibility for the services provided. We ensure that management provides, you know, certain employees to oversee the services that are done, just to make sure that they're adequate, they make sense, and that there's kind of an overall accepting responsibility of management of these kind of services that are performed. Overall, in line with that, we're not aware of any circumstances or relationships that would create any sort of independence threat or conflict between us and the schools, and we believe that we're independent of the schools and have met our ethical responsibilities within our auditing standards as such. Some further required communications. We encounter no significant difficulties in dealing with management or the finance team in completing our audit. We had no disagreements with management regarding to any, you know, accounting policies, audit standards, or any sort of other matters that might affect the financial reporting. We did not consult any outside engagement team or any other further individuals related to the audit. And at the end of each audit, at the end of each year, we also request certain representations from management that we include in what we call the management representation letter, which is dated the same date of the report, of the report date, which is November 26. Further ones, sometimes we have cases and audits where management might go outside of the audit team and speak with kind of third-party consultants on certain matters related to either financial reporting, you know, standards, just overall, you know, help with certain accounting items. We don't know such instances where any further kind of, or second opinion consultations were had with other accounts in terms of this other findings or issues piece here. Throughout the audit, we always discuss random pieces that come up, either finding certain matters that we see when we're, you know, performing our testing, reviewing the ACF, and these discussions just come up in the normal course of business. So we speak with, you know, Renee and her team and those of management, just to make sure that everyone's aware of what we see and talk through how best to alleviate anything if it were to come up, and we don't know issues in doing so. We didn't know, as of the date of this presentation, we didn't know fraud or illegal acts, and no violations of laws or regulations that were noted. And of course, no events or conditions that were noted that would indicate any substantial doubt for the school's ability to continue as a going concern. Some final other matters. So these are kind of the parts of the ACF that you will see within. The first one requires supplementary information, or RSI for short. We only perform limited procedures over this section. This is basically information that supplements the basic financial statements that we focus on strictly during our audit, and we only provide some limited procedures over the RSI. So that could include, you know, inquiring of management, making sure it's consistent, you know, with the other information that we've seen. And the basic financial statements is just making sure that overall that, you know, the information itself reads well, makes sense, and kind of aligns with anything else that we've seen during the audit. But to that sense, we don't provide any specific opinion over the RSI, that's not really kind of covered in our audit. We just kind of provide a, or a limited assurance related to it. For the supplementary information, which is slightly different from the required supplementary information, we do include this within our kind of audit opinion. So this is another kind of add-on to the financial statements that we do look at specifically, very similar to the RSI, where we, you know, make inquiries to ensure that we understand what's, you know, within that information, make sure it's consistent with GAAP, make sure it's consistent with what we've seen both last year and what we learned this year. And of course, that is all included within our audit, and we, you know, don't know issues related to that information. The last piece, which is, you can kind of call it the other information or the intro and the sat tables, another piece that we don't have, you know, speak on specifically, but we just review to ensure that it's consistent, has information that needs, kind of speaks well with the other pieces of the, you know, financial statements and ACF that we do look at. And similar to the others, we know to no issues related to that information. Finally, just some upcoming financial reporting changes. So you'll see there's a decent number of them for coming up. You know, they're always making something new each year, so there's going to be an ever-growing list after this. The one I do want to point out specifically is that first one, so GASB 101, the compensated absences for many governments, and I'm sure the schools here specifically as well. This one's probably going to cause the biggest change or biggest kind of workload to get through for next year. This one's going to be, you know, effective for next year, and it's going to affect your compensate absence, so stuff like vacation and sick leave. Back when this was first, you know, done by the GASB, the earlier standard related to compensated absences, there's really only two types of leave. So it was just really like vacation and sick leave, but nowadays, there's many more different types of vacation that you could have, different types of leave that a government can provide. And this new standard kind of provides some ways and analysis of kind of understanding that, ways to record that properly on the financial statements, and make sure disclosures related to those are proper. So with a lot of governments, of course, having compensated absences, including the schools, there's going to be a pretty big lift, I can imagine, to, you know, implement the standard for the next year. And of course, we're always happy to either discuss the potential impacts of these standards and provide any assistance where we can, you know, where necessary to help out in the implementation of these. I know I talked a lot, so that is it for the presentation. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. The contact information for myself and Laura Harden, who's the director on this engagement, is also up there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lamorda. Are there any questions from the board, Mr. Hosang?
First of all, thank you for the presentation. It was great seeing all this. It sounds like our only quote-unquote negative issue is the segregation of duties. Do you have any recommendations or thoughts that we could try and incorporate to try to correct that part?
Yeah, it's a great question. It's, I'd say the segregation of duties is a very kind of inherent risk with a lot of schools, and we see it in a lot of just separate schools, both, you know, in this government and many others as well. And I think the recommendation usually just comes down to just ensuring that the policies and procedures that are already laid out in the manuals that the, you know, bookkeepers and the principals have are just kind of followed to the T, right? Just making sure that most of the manuals, and I think the ones that we reviewed as well, you know, they have, you know, bookkeepers need to prepare, principals need to review before anything goes out. And those are, that is the segregation of duties. It's when that doesn't appear, that's when the issue pops up, right? And inherently, it could, because there's only really two people that are involved in that process. So really, the recommendation is kind of just keeping up with the training, make sure people are aware of that policy, right? Make sure they're aware of that procedure so that they can follow that perfectly, and maybe going back and reviewing certain transactions to make sure like, hey, is this process happening? And not just hoping that it's happening or something like that. But we didn't note many instances related to that, which is great for the separate schools. A lot of times, there can be a lot of issues with that, and we didn't really come through for that for physical activity funds, but there's always a few times that that pops up that needs to be looked at.
Mr. Hosang, would you get Ms. Ewen to speak to the training that we do with bookkeepers every single year to ensure there is that segregation of duties?
Sure. We have meetings with the bookkeepers twice a year to go over policies and procedures. We also do internal audits where we go out and take a sample and look at some of the higher transaction amounts and review them. higher transaction amounts and review them internally to prepare for this annual audit.
And really, the only other way you could really separate was to hire another person and put them in the mix, which we don't have the liberty of doing. So, we do, we do work hard to make sure everything's done very, very well. Thanks to Ms. Ewing and her staff.
Any other questions from board members? Thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you, Ms. Ewing, to you and your staff. We probably do, but we should not take for granted the fact that this is so clean and easy because that's really a tremendous, tremendous deal and a tremendous amount of work to make sure that it's this positive. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Been us all out of jail. That's good.
No orange.
Sorry, I just lost my... Okay, there it is. All right, we will move on to item six point zero two, a compensation study report. I think we're all eager to hear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you remember last year, during the budget process, the board was very interested in having a compensation study completed to look at how we compare with our peers and many other things as well. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Baker to introduce our guest this evening to present this formal report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Within the Elevate Twenty-Eight Priority Human Capital and Positive Culture Goal Three addresses compensation. To assist us with attaining this goal, Bolton Rewards was contracted to complete a comprehensive compensation study, and this project included a thorough analysis of the current job descriptions, careful research to ensure market competitiveness, and a high-performing school division. We're pleased tonight to welcome the President of Bolton Rewards, Dan Ripperger, and Senior Consultant Jennifer Durham, who will present the summary of the studies. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to certainly work with the school system, appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. I am Dan Ripperger, President of Bolton Rewards. Joining me to my right, to your left, is Jennifer Durham, who's one of our senior consultants and served as the project manager working with the school system. Jennifer's working the clicker, so...
Didn't have it turned on.
Continue the test skills. There we go. So, this is a summary report, and kind of start with a little introduction in terms of some of the tasks we accomplished. We did go through the current compensation program and really trying to look for effectiveness in the quality of the design. We then did a very extensive market benchmarking engagement, looking at peers locally, and then really got into different types of program recommendations. So, you know, one of those things is based on structures, how close are they to market, you know, that key competitiveness comparison. But we also looked at things that we know sort of drive people's satisfaction with pay, employees, and things around the perception of internal fairness and equity. So, we look at job titles, how structures are designed, and some of those other items as well. This report hopefully will highlight some of our major findings, and certainly, if there are any questions as we go through, certainly would welcome those for sure, or happy to answer any questions at the end. By way of background, there are some fairly large tasks that we were completed during the study. First is interviewed organizational department leadership to make sure we understood the school system, labor markets, particular challenges that were occurring. We reviewed extensively the existing base pay program to ensure our understanding and clarity in terms of how it works, how it wasn't working in different areas. We collected all of the organizational charts, job content information. You know, one of the things that we try to utilize is we have a discovery, a functional discovery survey that we ask department heads and leadership to complete. That gives us some guidance in terms of management interviews, but allows us to, in writing, get a fairly clear picture of some where the recruitment issues are and some of those other challenges. We did conduct an extensive pay and pay practices survey, worked with administration to identify peers in the local market, you know, who are the most appropriate to compete against and to survey. And then bringing that together and trying to understand what the school system's objectives are, really did a gap analysis, what needs to change potentially, or what do you need to consider to change to, you know, help improve the operation of the program moving This is Compensation One Oh One for us, but we always like to present it, or at least I do. It really just talks about the way a pay system fits together and talks about the interconnectivity of so many of the items, you know. Oftentimes, when we sit and talk to a department head, they go to, this particular job's not paid correctly, or we're having a problem here. So much of that has to do potentially with some other piece in the process to develop how that pay system should work. So, it could go back to how a job's described, you know, what it's actually, the level of it, are there more than one level? So, there's so many different components that part of our review is trying to help identify what the right fixes would be to help the system going forward. So, it's a point-in-time picture, you know, as we look at the marketplace, but we're also hoping to make recommendations that will help the system stay competitive on an ongoing basis. So, it's something that allows for a bit more effective design as well. We collected a lot of background data. I won't bore everyone too much with it, but anything that existed, we gathered, we reviewed, and we bugged Mr. Baker and Dr. Kiefer and just about everyone in terms of making sure we understood all of the detail that exists, including, you know, all of the electronic information and pay policies and programs. We interviewed, Jennifer and I were talking, I think it was a little over forty different department heads and management team to make sure we understood how different functions operated, you know, very much in terms of job analysis, how job descriptions fit in, to make sure we were understanding the right way to classify work, particularly as we were looking at market comparisons. And certainly, the ongoing recruitment and retention of teachers and academic support roles is important, and, you know, we heard that where appropriate, you know, where it was part of the department's focus. But there are a couple additional areas where we did, you know, as we're talking with the interviews, in terms of having trouble with bus drivers, custodial staff, and child nutrition roles, where just very difficult to recruit these. And there's all sorts of reasons for that, but it doesn't sort of change that recruitment challenge. And, you know, that's one of those we just point out here because I think certainly, you know, being competitive with the teaching and academic support roles is important, and we'll focus on that, but I didn't want these three to get lost in that discussion as well. So, looking at the current program, it's very well-designed overall. You know, there are a lot of components that make sense and certainly should be, help it be effective on an ongoing basis, you know, in terms of how job descriptions are created, who's responsible for it, the formality of it and the formatting of it. Very clear in terms of exempt and non-exempt status from a compliance perspective with the Fair Labor Standards Act. That's, you know, the overtime regulations. There is a published schedule of active jobs and with ranges identified, so it's something where it is there for administration to use as a tool. It's not a lot of black box, this role's here, this person's there. And then there are pay policies that fit the structural design or fit how an open range might work and the way promotions happen and the way increases happen. The, really, the two major areas that I wouldn't even suggest are necessarily that major, but areas where we identified certainly some improvement could occur. First would be a use of job titles, and this is one of those, you know, in terms of art for us, these are what we would call hierarchical titles. So, it's what is a specialist compared to a coordinator compared to an assistant, which sounds very fastidious, and I appreciate it is a little bit, but it is also one of those things that can cause a perception of pay and equity. If you have a coordinator at two completely different roles or levels within the organization, if you're someone who's in a supportive role versus a management role, you might not think as a coordinator, you're sort of at the right level or paid correctly compared to that coordinator who's in a management role. And it is not surprising to us, but it is one of those things that really erodes that perception that employees would have. And then I think the other piece is really looking at the step progression on the teacher steps, and then we'll talk a little bit about it with the pay ranges, but there's a lot of overlap between the, on the open ranges for the non-teacher schedules. So, there's a lot of potential lack of clarity in terms of one grade and really having differentiation between jobs in a lower grade or a grade above that. One of the things that you'll see that we recommend is a change to the teacher step structure and to putting in a more consistent progression. And you'll see it does have a financial impact, you know, to do that, to try and repair it. But we do feel from a recommendation perspective that it's very appropriate to do that, to try and manage pay and career growth. So, because the non-teacher roles are on an open range structure, there's really two components to try and to ensure that the pay is competitive and it fits policy. So, once you have the structure developed, it becomes your pay policy. So, this is when we say it's market and you look at a midpoint or a target. I'm just assuming everyone's generally familiar with some of that terminology. If you'd like me to go into it more, please let me know. But that midpoint becomes market, it becomes your pay policy. So, structure itself can be competitive with the market, but that doesn't mean your actual pay is. You might just not have people in the right places in the pay range based on their performance over time and the job and some of those components. So, what we look at is this actual pay alignment and a ratio, or a common terminology of something called a compa ratio, which simply put is a person's base pay divided by the midpoint. So, if you make that assumption that the midpoint is where you want to be at market and someone's exactly at it, then their compa ratio would be a hundred percent. If their compa ratio is ninety percent, that would mean they're ten percent below what you say your market target is or what your market is. So, what we see overall, again, these are for non-teachers because these are ranges, you're about eleven point three percent below the structured midpoints. So, unless, unless there is a lot of jobs where everyone's new in the role, we would typically say that your actual pay is less than competitive just based on your current structure. So, what we would typically see if it's a distribution of where on average experience is ten years, twelve years, that compa ratio overall would be closer to a hundred percent. So, your actual pay is currently, in our estimation, trailing the market. If you look at the distribution, which is the table below, so we use that compa ratio to indicate where in a range people are paid. So, you'll see the range location has below eighty percent, eighty percent to ninety percent. Competitive range for us would be from ninety percent to a hundred ten percent, and if people were paid within that, that's generally competitive. And then as it starts to get higher, so what you can see is that thirty point nine percent of the pay rates are in the competitive range, but that's less than a third of the employees. And you can see the vast majority are below that competitive range. Teachers are a little different because it's a step structure, and if the structure is competitive, then you would assume that the pay is competitive as well, you know, for teachers. But you can see that nearly three-quarters, seventy-two point two percent of the teachers are on step twenty or below. So, you know, that's kind of halfway through. So, even then, a lot of your teachers are certainly in your career as well.
So, the next phase that we took on was the market survey. So, what we did here was we worked with WJCC to figure out who we wanted to survey and who the peers would be, who you would compare yourself to. We surveyed eighteen different localities, either public sector employers or other public school systems. And out of that, we got data back from thirteen different agencies, and those are all listed there on that slide. We collected over twenty-two thousand rows of data, so this was individual employee pay data on twenty-two thousand employees, and that equated to over six hundred different jobs. So, from there, we use all of that data then to create our market statistics that we'll use for the comparisons. Since the teachers are on a step scale, we looked at that a little bit differently. We went ahead and collected the pay scales for ten of the peers that we had identified, and this table just shows a little summary of what that might look like. The contract length pretty much is the same for all of those, are all around that ten-month, two-hundred-day structure. And then there were, on average, four lanes for each structure, anywhere from four to six, I guess, well, there's one with two in there. And then number of steps, again, that average was around thirty-four. So, really, having forty steps seemed like it wasn't all that far off from what a lot of the peers were doing. And then again, the total width, so from that first step to the maximum, that last step, that total width or that range for that was on average around sixty-one point nine percent. So, they were all a little bit wider, which you would expect when you have thirty to forty steps, that there's going to be some larger width there. Once we had all of that market data and we created our market statistics, we took a look at how your pay ranges, and again, this is for the educational support and the administrative staff, how those ranges compared to that market data. And you can see there in the chart that the midpoints, those structured midpoints, are below the fiftieth percentile of the market. The administrative scale was at ninety-four point seven percent, and the educational support at ninety-eight point four percent. And similar to the compa ratio, if your market target, if you're trying to target that fiftieth percentile, you really want that to be closer to a hundred percent so that your midpoints are meeting that market target. For the teachers, we did a review of the scales and put together a little comparison in five-step or five-year increments or five-step increments. And you can see there how WJCC's pay then compares to the fiftieth percentile of the peers. Overall, is roughly four point six percent lower or below that fiftieth percentile as compared to the peers. And here, we looked at the three main lanes that we were able to gather. Not everybody had master's plus thirty, so we didn't use that as a comparator. There were some that had bachelor's plus twelve. So, we used the three most common lanes that were available.
So, talking some of the program recommendations based on that, I think one of the things that, from a job title perspective, that would be fairly straightforward would be to just add some clarity, kind of define what a coordinator is and make some adjustments accordingly. Similarly, with a specialist, you know, sometimes you'll see that as a very senior-level exempt professional role, but sometimes you'll see it as a clerical role, a clerk role. So, it's just trying to reconcile those two. Ultimately, titles are difficult, you know, as you're dealing with employees, and I'm always sensitive to department heads and managers as they're trying to figure out the best titles because it's certainly something that is important. From a philosophic perspective, you know, certainly, I think it's probably clear looking at the local market and as the peers, that is the right labor market. You'll see in our recommendations that we actually just use that fiftieth percentile to make structural changes and make recommendations from ranges. But as we certainly have got to know the local area, we finished a project about a year ago with James City County, so we kind of had this similar engagement that I think there's probably a good argument that could be made to target something above the fiftieth percentile, just in terms of the caliber of talent that you're trying to recruit and trying to retain. You know, keeping in mind, we didn't really go into the definitions of the fiftieth percentile, but it's just that statistic where if you pick a job and it's at the fiftieth percentile, half the people in the market make less and half make more. So, it really is just that middle rung that you're looking at. So, we build it on the fiftieth percentile because I think that's the most common approach, and to go above that certainly has additional financial implication, you know, from a structure, particularly with a step structure. And to go above that certainly has additional financial implication, you know, from a structure, particularly with a a step structure.
So our recommendations then for the base pay structures would be to create a general range structure. And this would combine that educational support and administrative structure into one. Um, within those two structures, there are four overlapping grades already, the top four grades on the support structure. Overlap directly with the lower four grades on the administrative scale, so we just re- recommend combining those together into one scale that has twenty grades. And then uh increasing that scale or that range by two point seven percent to bring it up to that fiftieth percentile of the market. This is a look at it, we didn't adjust any any employee or any job uh actual grade, we just simply moved them into that new grade. And then the progression, that grade progression, so the from midpoint to midpoint. We left that the same as well as that range spread from uh the minimum to the maximum. So nothing changed other than combining the two into one and then adjusting it two point seven percent to reach that fiftieth percentile target. For the teachers, there are really two approaches that you could take, we could leave the structure alone and simply shift everything or increase it four point six percent. To be closer to that fiftieth percentile target and leave the design alone. Um, alternatively, what we would recommend is to create a new step structure, um we would keep it at the forty steps. But we would create a a consistent um step difference between from step to step and be consistent. Right now, on your current design, um between steps is anywhere from point one percent or point oh one percent to three point one percent. Just depending on where you are in the range, there's really no rhyme or reason um or any consistency across the steps. So the a new step structure, then we would um align that to that fiftieth percentile of the market. And then have a consistent progression between the steps. And this is a look at that structure, so again, still has the forty steps, maintains uh the four lanes. But then there's a the the progression is a little more consistent and this does have um some cost implications with it as well.
So this is a a similar chart to what we talked about previous with the compa ratio. And since we combined the structures, um which um and and increased them. Um, you'll probably uh notice that the compa ratio went down, so the competitiveness in terms of actual pay is a little bit less. Um, I think that's something you would expect because it's also a timing issue, we're looking at current base pay rates. Compared to a structure for the next time period, so even if um we made no sort of changes, we should still see this sort of. Difference. Um, it does indicate and does mean that basically your actual base pay going into the next year is thirteen point six percent below your market target. And um I know that administration has done a lot of work of really trying to identify where in a range individuals should be paid. And yeah, they don't don't need my my um uh my recognition, but that's a a great thing to have. That's a statistic that that we don't come across that often, uh working with clients to actually know. You know, what those previous years of experience are, so um all this is sort of showing is that by increasing the open ranges. It just exacerbates that that actual competitiveness issue that might exist. From an annual adjustment perspective, um really, the ranges should be reviewed each year, as should the steps. Um, there are um a a number of sources of information that are out there in terms of um what typical market movement might be, so. They are the kind of thing that assuming that it's it's financially viable, um to try and keep them competitive. Uh, it would be that that increase. The uh the step structure, this is one of those differences, you know, as you would move a step structure, then then necessarily. Uh, everyone's pay would also increase, where if you're talking about open ranges, which is why we didn't recommend steps for the remaining staff. Um, it's it's a the twofold process, you can move the structure uh without increasing pay right away. You know, you can move the structure and then look at that individual contribution over time to figure out what actual increases should be. And um again, it is one of those where we do recommend looking at it each year, even if you don't move it. Uh, even if you think that that you're competitive with market, uh but to do that review and and to be able to um, you know, have some confidence in that. Looking at the stipends and supplemental pay, uh we did do quite a bit of review on this and and versus um. Getting into too much detail with it, there's really just a a few roles where it was off and this is such a philosophic. Um, piece for each system, you know, in terms of of what some of the the stipends are for and what they are. But the ones that we would suggest maybe taking a look at in the context of philosophy. Uh, as high school and middle school assistant coaches, high school and middle school uh cheerleading coaches. Middle school department chair, curriculum leader, and then the athletic director, those are just ones with the other peers. That their stipends are higher and and in a way that. It 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 might, it certainly uh makes sense to review it and to see how it's aligned. So this is the the kind of the overarching piece and and I really want to um stress to you that this is a preliminary implementation investment. That um there's certainly some effort that still needs to go into this to ensure we're crediting experience correctly. Um, that people or credit step experience correctly in some of those, but um. What we're suggesting is that there's approach uh over time, over a number of years to try and get to. Uh, where you would need to be to be competitive in the market. If we look at the general ranges, the the uh difference uh for next year immediately would be four and a half percent. Or one point seven million, one point seven four eight, um with that four and a half percent increase. That is uh combining the ranges, but it's also looking at at someone's um experience in the job. And making potentially some equity adjustments to try and get them to the right spot in the range, you have to help with that actual pay competitiveness. And then um the teacher's step structure and Jen, hopefully you'll have this, um the. The the teacher's step structure, if we did not make the change to. The, what would that percent be?
It was four point six percent if you just keep the current design.
Correct, so by by, we kept all the teachers on the same steps in this analysis. But by trying to make it more consistent, so it was more predictable from step three to four. Um, it took that that smaller percentage to a total of a nine point one percent change. So five point nine million in new funds, so for a total of seven million six fifty or seven point four percent. So if 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 there's a s- if there's a spare seven point seven million lying around, it would be a a great way to. To have it competitive right away. Um, certainly, there's um a process, I know, in a lot of instances to try and uh make up that difference. So with that, that is um our discussion, our presentation, um would love to to answer any questions or um. Provide further information if you would like.
Thank you. Board members, questions, Mrs. Henley?
I have a question about the stipends, um so if if we find out that someone, that groups are paid more, whatever. What do you do, you just freeze the stipend, I mean, so that you don't lower it, because then that's not fair, right? Do you adjust it down or do you just leave it and just?
Well, ti- typically with a stipend, since it's something that's sort of re-earned, um it depends, but you certainly could. You'd be much more likely to lower a stipend than you would actual pay.
Miss Henley, I believe the stipends that were listed are below others, correct?
Correct.
All right, and then my second question, how did longevity pay factor into? Your study, people that are still on the longevity pay.
Well, you know, honestly, we looked at actual pay, so we didn't look at at what system they were on necessarily. So for an individual, whatever they're making and how it, so it's a question of how they got to what they're making. And including that and then being able to include that in our comparison to the ranges, so. It it, to to the extent someone's receiving longevity pay, it's included. If they're not, then it's not included.
Mr. Riffel, go ahead.
Yeah, but I just have a question about the general way that the data was presented, um on slide three, you suggested that. The groups or the pay ranges for administrative and educational were separate, then on slide thirteen, you combined in them for some reason. Is there a reason why the administrative pay was not separate? Let me, because in my in my brain, non teachers, I separate them from support staff and then administrative pay, but then you put on slide fifteen, like, here's everybody. That's like, that's kind of how the board maybe wants to think about this data, or myself, I guess.
Because we combined the ranges is one of our recommendations, brought them together.
So so currently, Mr. Riffel, we have a administrative scale and a support scale and there's a small number of steps on the administrative scale and then there's more on the support scale. But if you create a unified scale with both of those in it, your scale is goes further and allows all of those positions to go into one scale. And that's not unusual in other school divisions, that you just literally go right down from, you know, deputy superintendent to to custodial staff member on the same scale. And then the, because the teacher scale is so different, it's it remains separate.
I appreciate the clarification, um and then I guess in that same threshold, like, would, I would say, like, almost all positions that we have are not. Maybe clearly said that we're below in every way, like five percent in market across the board.
No, you'll have some, you'll have, some of your roles aren't aren't off uh from a competitive this perspective. Um, but it's that that overall that are, but when we look at how a job gets graded. Uh, it's a combination of market and then also some form of internal evaluation, so. Really trying to balance what the competitive rates are in the market and what's equitable, what represents the right representation um within the system.
I'm chair, um because my my thoughts on receiving a study like this is like, there is a point in which the board. Does allocate raises to particular groups of our pay sales instead of creating, I mean, I miss, I understand the reason why we combined the scale. Um, but then that also kind of creates this parity of like, well, at what point do these people catch up, right, like this, that's for me is like. Sounds like we're going to be kind of chasing that for a long time and I, yeah, clearly we just said like four point seven would kind of solve the problem next year, but it's like. That's not a likely scenario, so I was changing the scale, giving it one point s- seven, I I'm just trying to like kind of grab around like. Who do we give money to, who do we not, right, like, that's kind of like the point of raises and that's, the state doesn't tell us we have to do that a certain way, we we choose to do that as a school board. And that's, right, I don't see that as broken up in the presentation the way I I would love to see it, which is like. If next year you should provide, you know, that kind of thing used to happen, I think, that's a step, I don't know, I've seen a lot of paid disparity studies and that's, this is. I, they always kind of like, I would like to see it break it into like our groups and how we could best serve our community with the money that we have available to us. So what what group would be that money should go towards like next year, like, is it support staff, is it, right?
No, understand completely, I I will suggest you that we purposely don't break it out that way. Um, certainly between teachers and and the other supportive roles, because there are different types of structures. Um, it, you know, as you, as certainly the analysis could be there, you know, looking at different employee groups. But i- it's one where we tend to look at every every job is is a necessary job. So in terms of trying to segment, we're only going to give money to these folks, um or this different group. Um, what we would tend to suggest is uh to try and and um over time, particularly if if you do have the ability to catch up. Uh, to to provide increases to to everyone, you know. Certainly based on on however you want to recognize contribution over time and step adjustments and that sort of thing. But sort of that data can be made available.
Mr. Dr. Craviss?
Yes, um, thank you very much, that's a pretty detailed presentation. I just had a co- uh one question primarily, when you, in the very beginning, you just talked about pay satisfaction. Number one, how how do you uh the employees, how do our folks um express their satisfaction or dissatisfaction? I mean, what do they say, well, I don't get paid enough or I can go next door, or what, what exactly, how do you?
It's 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 all of that, I mean, the the where the rubber hits the road is they don't join, they leave. You know, it's that whole recruitment and and retention aspect. Um, yeah, certainly there are surveys, it wasn't part of what we were charged with, but there are surveys that you can do. To help help, you know, get a sense of what that engagement's like, you know, what the satisfaction is is like. Um, usually it it contributes to morale, uh but the biggest piece is is people don't stay. You know, as as you look at like uh bus drivers, for example. You know, and I know it's a challenge, but it's it's still a necessary kind of role and and pays could be at the heart of it.
Uh, one quick question, how how do people view the forty step arrangement, that's that seems like a pretty detailed hierarchy.
Uh, within the school system?
Employees.
They they didn't seem to mind it, um I think the the issue was just the inconsistency within the steps. Um, I did want to mention, I forgot to say this when I was uh presenting, but that the consistency between the steps, the percent increase is one point two five percent. So we took it from point oh one to three point one, you know, all those differences to a consistent one point two five between steps.
Okay, um, we have a board member who's joining us uh by Zoom, so uh Mrs. Donner, what's your question?
Thank you, um I just wanted to understand, so for instance, with the conversation around, let's say, our support staff, such as our bus drivers. So in this, we would, so if you have the the range of the midpoint and the targets. Then if, let's say, we said, okay, bus drivers need to um have a better. Compensation rate, then that's when we start looking at what grades people are, right, and so it's, so I think. If I'm trying to understand some of the questions earlier, if we think that bus drivers are a targeted group, for example. Then we would then also look at like, how are they compensated? In comparison to bus drivers around us and in order to adjust them, then maybe they're moving from their current grade. Up a grade or up another grade and that's how we start to deal with the nuances of each individual group.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's exactly it, I I will suggest, we do have the uh information on how. Surrounding jurisdictions are paying for bus drivers, so we have that information. The second piece to that is looking at how people are actually paid in the ranges, bus drivers, are they all kind of at that low end? So, you know, uh to your point, um maybe bus drivers, since they are, actual pay is less than competitive. It's something to address specifically.
I think if if you have that information available, I think. Love to have it. Um, Mr. Riffel?
Sorry, I don't want to take, I I think, like, the problem I that I, this is the reason why I maybe ran on the school board is like, there's lots of. Ways that governments go about spending and I think we've created this arms race where we go against our other neighboring divisions to kind of, who can pay their superintendent this and that. This, no, this is how it works, it's kind of goes from top down, like Hampton, for example, is paying their superintendent three hundred thousand dollars and. There's a lot of public flashback because that contract is due every two years and maybe they don't understand the full process and and we do in this room, right, but. But that's kind of where I am as a board member, is like, how do I get to a point like, I can recruit somewhere from a central office or a principal a lot easier than it is for me to recruit a bus driver. Or as a teacher, right, those are the the most impactful jobs and those people are very necessary for our our state and so. Uh, I just would like to see that the data, I think it's saying, the questions aren't, this presentation is great, it really does kind of solve a lot of like, here's the overall picture, but. Um, I think when we move into the next budgetary cycle, we are looking at kind of what can we do uh with the greatest impacts to our our funds. Uh, because the state doesn't require us to do besides three percent, right, so, and that's only for S B Q or, sorry. As the the standards of quality, whatever that abbreviation is. A lot of those, I haven't been soup today, um but I just, I appreciate the study, I I didn't say thank you and I wanted to say thank you for this, so, yeah. I, Miss Henley, of get on me for not being priceful and then criticizing you, so I try to be a a better board member here, so, thank you.
No, this is, this is very much um uh the 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 first run through of of presenting to you, you know. The administrative team will be going through it as well in a lot more detail, I'm sure, particularly as. Uh, budget recommendations come through, you know, it's it's really, um the the way I always view the relationship. It's sort of the administration's responsibility to tell you how they're going to fix it, so, you know, hopefully they'll be coming back with some some more specifics. You know, as you look at it.
Uh, any other questions? Um, yeah, I was, I was going to say perhaps um. Or through our budget process or other conversations moving forward, you, perhaps you already know the targeted groups. That's maybe not what a consultant's going to say.
perhaps you already know the targeted groups, that's maybe not what a consultant's going to say, you should pay this group more, but you might be bringing that information.
Yes, well, certainly we will bring back more information to you and start to prioritize some of the information that we perceive, because seven point six million is a fairly hefty price tag. However, I think the obvious things that came across in the presentation to me is that all employee groups are under com- underpaid compared to our peers. And, and so we've got to decide which, which ones we want to address first. Um, or do we, when we three, everybody gets three percent from General Assembly on down, everybody gets the same. What do we need to do on top of that to start to address this difference in all employee groups over the next several years? And how much are we prepared to ask for to make that happen? So that's just something to grapple with as the board, and then we'll, we'll try to pin it down to various groups of where you want to put those resources.
Oh, one more, uh, question I have is, um, and I, I know this has sort of been addressed and it's sort of the obvious, the obvious question. If we do this over a certain number of years, I don't know, did you recommend a certain timeframe to do this? And if, if not, or if, if you, if you have an idea, how do we, I mean, these numbers are only good for today. If, if this is, say, you know, over the course of four or five years, the landscape can be completely different with competitors in five, five years.
Right. It's, it's not gonna go down though, so, so there is gonna be that catch up, you know, as you go.
How do we outpace competitors? Future rather than just catching up to today?
I think that's part of the implementation discussions that, that we still need to have. And I think it's part of proposals that the administrative team will come back with. And we'll certainly provide data and, and help with that. But it's getting, that's why, you know, we, we mentioned that there is that case for something beyond the fiftieth percentile above average. But that takes it above that seven point four percent again, you know, that's, gets very aspirational. There's a practicality that exists.
Nice little limit.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Riffel.
Just some clarifications, um, I guess on slide sixteen, where you've got the recommended teacher's step structure and consistent steps. Are you basically saying if a teacher comes in at step zero with a bachelor's degree, that's what their recommended salary would be?
Uh, unless, unless there's a refined policy, you know, there's, there's some, some, um, adjustments that get made in terms of the, just the general administration, yeah.
And then for each step, are you looking at, at that as like a, a year of teaching? So a teacher that comes in at step zero, brand new teacher, they make fifty five, three eleven for the first year. Second year, they make fifty six, one sixty eight. And so that's how the teacher's schedule is.
So, so yes, theoretically, except that second step or that, that amount should actually go up by a percentage to reflect market movement, so it's gonna be even a little higher than that. Yep.
To make things easy, let's just say that there's no.
Exactly, yeah.
So, and going back to page twelve then, when you're looking at the recommended general range structure, or you, you have it from grade five to grade twenty four, and you have the entry, are there different scales or levels for the G twenty four or the G eleven? How, how does someone that in that grade level, I guess, go from year to year for that compensation?
What, what you do is you, you develop, and, and this is why we had it broken into the groups of the terciles, because it allows you to put in some definition around how you wanna credit, credit past service if you're looking at someone to hire. And it's, it's very much a philosophic decision, you know, you might say, we're gonna just say, if you've been in the same job for four years somewhere else, we're gonna credit four years and there's a formula. Or you might wanna say, hey, we're only gonna count half of that, because it wasn't here, you know, at that, um, WJCC. So you're able to come up with those sorts of policies and adjustments to give that guidance where in a range someone should be paid.
Mr. Riffel, I'm saying just for reference, that when a, a teacher comes to us, we, we give them credit for every year of experience as a teacher.
I guess I should preface it, I'm looking at this, I'm a federal employee, so I've got the GS scale with different steps, so. And that entails all federal employees, doesn't matter what you are, what you do. There may be some exceptions to that, but I mean, it, it handles most of, of federal employees. So if you're at a GS thirteen, step one, you know the following year, you're gonna go to step two, barring increases each year. Um, so I'm just trying to figure out a way for the recommended general range structure, how that works for those employees.
So each year, there would be an increased budget? It, it could be three percent, um, it could be four and a half, if, if for some reason the funding was there to catch up. And then that amount goes to moving people through the range. So that, that's how you would versus a step, you kind of move that four and a half, understanding that the range also moves a certain percentage each year to stay current with the market.
Sir, I'm thinking of questions as we get, sorry, Madam Chair.
No, go ahead.
Um, oh, having the scale from like, the, well, I have two questions to this now, I'd recognize, is it what is one through four on the scale? Is it like, there's no, entry starts at G five, there's, we just remove one through four from, from our own?
Yeah, we, we, we kept what was there from a label.
From our own perspective, okay.
Correct.
Um, and then, well, is, are we talking about how like people think about this ranges and how they feel satisfied? When, when someone who is a support staff or somebody compared to the, the G twenty five or twenty four kind of gets hired and, and at entry, would they see the scale like at some point? Like, I just think it's kind of a weird thing that if you're getting the minimum at five, you can see the maximum, but you'll never probably get to that point. Or how's that, how does that work when it comes to like, people interpreting the market? Um, you know, I think it's a more internal thing, right? Like, because our scale would be different than our neighbors, but when, when people see this type of scale, how do they generally feel? Or why, why do we choose something like this?
Well, that, I mean, that's a big challenge for the, the human resources department, you know, to really try and help communicate this and, and what it's supposed to represent and, and mean. Um, there's a lot of discussion today, I'm sure, for pay equity and transparency. And so some of it is, is for each individual employer to try and determine their palate for openness, you know? Because, um, rightly so, the more open you are, the more questions you get. And, um, it's, it's what that right balance is in terms of how you wanna do it, for sure. Um, hopefully, um, people don't feel like they'd never get to the, above the midpoint, you know, they don't feel they'll be able to grow. That's a, kind of a different challenge.
Well, I think it goes back to what you'd said earlier, like recruitment's the most important part, like, it's, you know, that's the thought we have as a board member, like, we can deal with the, the hiring of people. Often, and, and the hardest part for us is like, how do we get the right person to interview, right, to do this type of thing? It's like, that's the hardest part for us, so, um, and then they have to stay, like, they choose to, they stick with us, because, so, so thank you.
Oh, sure, sure.
I think there's a general frustration, I think, with, that's the whole system as a whole, not, not in our division, but I think the state level, like, throughout our, our parity of, of what we created here at the public sector, so, so thank you.
Great, I'm looking around the room for any last questions, Mrs. Donner, are you good? Okay, well, thank you very much, it's very helpful.
You all, um, have a great evening.
Thank you, too.
All right, item six point zero three, our strategic plan update, um, supporting priorities, safety and security, and human capital and positive culture, fitting?
Thank you very much indeed, Ms. Wall has come into the, the front to present this information to the board. And it's, this is one of the, the surveys that is going to inform our strategic plan, so it's, this is particularly important for us. Ms. Wall, when you're ready.
Thank you, yes, uh, we are on, we should be rocking and rolling, yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. As we met earlier this fall to consider our strategic plan Elevate Twenty Eight, we discussed specific goals under each priority, as well as the key performance indicators to monitor our goal progress. In some areas, we indicated that this year would serve as a baseline data collection year. And to that end, in October and November, we conducted a survey of WJCC school staff, parents or guardians, and students in grades four through twelve to collect baseline data around two specific goals. The data that was collected connects with goal six, under our safety and security supporting priority, and goal four, under our human capital and positive culture supporting priority. As we move through the slides, you will see either or both icons to indicate where the data we're discussing connects to that specific goal. Note that for both goals, we are aiming for ninety percent or higher reporting the given sentiment by June twenty twenty eight. So to orient you to the slide and, and the first question, each slide will indicate the statement that was posed to the stakeholder groups. In some cases, the question was identical for all three groups, however, in some cases like this one, the statement was tailored to the specific audience. So here, staff members were asked to respond to, students at my school feel like they belong. Families were presented with, students at my child's school feel like they belong. And for students, simply the statement, I feel like I belong. On the chart itself, you will see four blocks from left to right. Green on the far left represents strongly agree, next is blue or agree, then yellow is disagree, and finally on the far right is red or strongly disagree. Strongly agree and agree are added together to represent the overall level of agreement with that statement. So in this case, ninety five percent of staff agree or strongly agree that students at their school feel like they belong. Looking down the chart, you can see we started with staff, then ninety one percent of families agree that students at their child's school feel like they belong, and finally eighty seven percent of students feel like they belong. As described on the last slide, looking from top to bottom again, you will see results from staff, then families, then students. And again, from left to right, you'll see strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree. Here, participants were asked to respond to the statement, adults at my school or at my child's school respect students. Next, we see res- responding to the statement, students at my school or at my child's school respect other students. Here, students were asked to respond to the statement, there is a teacher, counselor, or staff member to whom I can go for help. And you can see the variations of the statement for staff and families on the slide. The statement presented here to staff was, the staff in this school care about student well-being. And again, the variations, the staff in my child's school, or for the student, the staff in my school care about student well-being. This statement was only presented to staff, the administrators in this school care about staff well-being. You can see that the icon on this slide has changed to indicate this piece of data is connected to goal four under human capital and positive culture supporting priority. Staff and students were asked to respond to the statement, I feel supported by teachers and staff in this school. And again, just to note that both icons appear here as this is connected to goals under both supporting priorities. Here, each stakeholder group responded to the same statement, school staff members are aware of safety and security procedures. And again, an identical statement, students are aware of safety and security procedures. Students and staff were, uh, presented with the same statement, I feel safe at school. And families were presented with the statement, my child feels safe at school, in this slide. Here, stakeholders expressed their level of agreement if their school is well-maintained. Next, participants responded to, teachers and staff set high expectations for every student. And finally, connected to both supporting priorities, stakeholders were asked to respond to an overall statement. Overall, my school is a good place to work and a good place for learning, that was for staff. And overall, my child's school or my school is a good place for learning, that was for families or students respectively. So now that we've gone through the baseline data, I wanted to bring this slide back up to connect back to the goals that we discussed at the beginning. Um, in reflecting on the data, there are definite areas of celebration, um, where we'll need to work to maintain that high level of agreement, that high level of sentiment, and then also areas of opportunity where we can grow through twenty twenty eight.
Thank you, Ms. Wall, um, are there any questions from board members? Is it something that you're trying to find it?
Okay, so this is very helpful, that's first slide on the, um, feedback, so if I'm understanding, it's like half of the people pretty much responded, correct? For the fourth or the twelfth graders?
Yes, exactly, depending on the stakeholder group.
And same thing with staff. Do we know, or where would we find, how many of those were elementary, how many were middle, and how many were high school student responses? Or does it break out somehow like that somewhere?
I'm sorry, specifically students, we can, we can do that.
Like by elementary, middle, and high, I was just curious on some of the responses to see. And the families one was very low, but that's out of eleven thousand, but if it's four through twelve, that's not, well, some of the fam, okay, never mind, it's just hard for me to tease it out. That's okay, but if, if, that would be helpful for me, thank you.
I think generally speaking, survey responses can be low. This is, it's, it's not bad for a first time around in terms of getting responses from families. And certainly, the percentage of staff involved was about.
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent, so, but overall, it was very encouraging.
Do the kids get this at, on their home computer with their families, or they got it at school, or?
Students received it at school, so we asked for, at the secondary level, for there to be dedicated time, it was sent to the students' school email. Um, so for each school to identify a dedicated time to ask students to log into their email and access the survey. At fourth and fifth grade, it was pushed out through Canvas, is that, the learning management system? So it was unique in that each child could only participate once, um, but it wasn't, uh, their emails aren't activated to receive external emails. So they had to access it in a different way, but it was unique to each individual child at school.
If they didn't wanna do it, they didn't have to do it, okay, got you.
Dr. Kavazas?
I just have one, um, do you think that twenty five percent of the families and thirty percent of the staff responses is adequate to give you a real true feeling of what's being, what's happening?
Obviously, we'd like it to be much higher, it's the first time we've engaged in this type of survey. It was purposefully short to, to try to get that response, and it was very targeted to what we wanted to know for our strategic goals. Um, maybe Ms. Wall could speak better to survey results and survey responses, or even Mr. Walker.
Statistically, uh, as far as norms go, that's, I, the student piece is exceptionally high, and, and staff and families is, is still a rather high response rate when you consider the body of statistical surveying.
I, I agree with that.
But of course, we wish it were higher.
Yeah, and because, and those people gave you very, very good results, you know, in eighty eight and ninety three percent feeling good and working in a good spot. I mean, what more do you want, pay? I don't know.
Yeah, we certainly had very positive in the nineties in a lot of the questions, which was very encouraging. So we just believe that there's at least thirty percent of our staff that, and, and families that, that are very happy with how things are going in these areas.
Quick, can I, can I ask a quick follow-up? With the, the families number, I'm just, can you, maybe, maybe I'm missing something that's obvious, but we have eleven thousand, what, three hundred and twenty four students? How do we have that many families when most fam, a lot of families have students in the same family?
Right, so accounting for siblings, multiple children from one household, um, and.
Do you think we'd have fewer families than students?
Would, in, in a two-parent household, there would be two invitations.
Okay, so, so then we might need to look at that invited number a little differently, the ratio of families and, families invited versus adults, individual adults invited. The ratio of families and, families invited versus adults, individual adults invited. The ratio becomes a little better in terms of response rates.
My, my last question is, this is just probably a me thing, when I see the strongly disagree or disagree. And so I'm, I'm under the impression there was no like a part where you fill in what their concern was. Like, if I see eighty-eight percent, I'm always concerned, what was the twenty-two percent or the twenty, you know, what, what was it that twelve? I'm doing kindergarten math, y'all have to forgive me, but that's why I don't tutor in math past third grade. But, so, I'm always concerned with, because we want the higher number, so what is it in there? So that made them feel unsafe or made them, because it could be something we could tweak, so, but that wasn't part of the surveys, my understanding.
Correct, so this was meant to collect the data here and then.
Okay.
And I think there'll be follow-up to this as we share it with principals and schools and and look to see if there's any of the numbers that are lower, if we can focus groups around that. Because we want to take steps now, so this data stays the same or goes higher next year. So there's a, there's a plan in place after reporting out to the board as to what we're going to do with it next.
Thank you, okay.
Ms. Chen, did you have a question before?
And I, I did, I was just more curious about what, what, I know that we'll get more details, but I think the initial reaction from, at least mine, and I feel like from the public will be what are sort of the action steps in order to close that gap. It seems like, I agree with Dr. Boss's, the staff results, granted, they're thirty percent of our staff. Were fairly, seemed fairly strong, if not already kind of at that baseline goal of ninety percent. But the students were, are from it. So I was just, sort of, these are just observations as you were going through, so I think this is really, really helpful. I'm glad that we're collecting data, we're making data-driven decisions. The students, fifty-three percent is great, it'd be great to get fifty percent on our next survey for staff and families. So I, I just want to hear about of what, what the, what the next steps are and when we will receive that information, just so that we are aware and the public is aware that we are, we are paying attention to this, this data and doing something actionable about it.
Yep, certainly, the, the first step is to present the information to you, and the second step is to start to, to look into what actions will come behind it. But I know we did push it out a few times, Ms. Wall, was our communication of this through various vehicles, you want to speak to that?
Right, so the initial invitation for families and staff, not for students, for families and staff, the invitation was sent out initially. And then there were up to two reminders for individuals who had not yet completed the survey at the time of the reminder being scheduled to send out, to send out. So really, we feel without peppering too many communications, if someone had chosen by three reminders to not participate, that that they perhaps weren't going to participate.
The very nature of a survey is you have a choice whether to take it or not, and certainly all students would probably not choose to take it either. So you can only, in a survey type of environment, you can only do so much without requiring a response. And then if you do, you, there's no guarantee if someone's forced to do something, will they even do it in the, in the right way?
If, if I may, I think it's also, that, and Ms. Wall and Dr. Hearn mentioned it, that, that there will be conversation with building administrators as early as Thursday of this week, looking at some of the survey data, providing access to the reports. And then as administration comes back to the board in the spring with some updates on priority work over the course of the year, we would be able to share if there have been specific action steps taken as a result of the data that we receive on the baseline. But then, as we get into next fall and survey again, was there growth, was there regression? And, and how might we continue to address that as an organization? So I, I think, to your question, specific about next steps is we need to take some time to determine what those next steps could be and should look like.
This survey will go out at the same time every year, over the next four years of the strategic plan. Same questions, same timeline. So there, it's up to us to, to make some differences in action, to make something change in the, in the meantime.
I have a follow-up question. Just about the, when the strategic plan was presented to us, there was a plan for a dashboard. Is there an update on that? I know there's been members of the public that are curious about, when is the data going to appear, what is the dashboard going to look like? When can I see the data and, and sort of the specifics of that?
We, we provided all of the data to Hanover, we're still waiting on the first showing of that dashboard back to us. And I don't think, Mr. Walker, we've heard anything for a few weeks. But we'll certainly reach out, because I think they talked about a December timeline to us, so we'll reach out.
And when we talk about data, we're talking about everything that's related to a goal.
All of the strategic plan goals.
Will be available for easy access and transparency.
Yep, yes ma'am.
Ms. Duffield, did you have a question?
Oh, yeah, I personally, I want to say thank you for the, the presentation, it's good to start seeing, we can start, I, I'm awesome. I'll speak to my experience when surveys, I think we should establish trends, I think it's important that we, we do that, so thank you for taking the initial whack of the mole here. I do, am, am a little cautious when looking at this, I think our student trending data is pretty in step of like, showing an enlarging problem of each of the questions, and I would, this is where I would, maybe petition the board, is like, what, what steps do we take as, like, facilitating a student voice? Because I feel there's very few times in which we hear from students outside of something like this, or the committee Ms. Chen and I serve on, like, how do we get to a point where this is an active conversation with people who are doing this every day? And understanding that why is it yellow and red versus green and blue, right, like? I just, it's, you know, I'm well beyond my time in school, and most of us here don't spend most of the time in, in buildings like we used to, right? So like, our perspective is from our staff, right, and that's maybe our best point of it, but, I mean, you can look at exponentially the data of like, our students are maybe pointing towards a problem, maybe the, the perspective is different than the staffer would be or adult, but I'm, we're here to serve students, and I, I, I would then be yearning for, where do we find this voice? And, and Ms. Wall, this is not a question to you, but more a question to my colleagues here, of like, what do we do at this point? Because this is maybe the first time we've seen the survey, but not the first time we've said, like, well, why are they saying this? You know, like, why are we hearing this type of thing, and we don't have a, a line item that says where this is? And then my second question would be, or, that was a statement, I'm sorry, my question would be, when we send a survey out like this, like, do we provide an open-ended, ended to like a question, like, what could be better? Like, how could the division improve, like, like, in like two hundred and fifty characters, something like that to people, like, is there opportunity for that? I just think we were missing kind of a mark when people already kind of captured for like six seconds or, or six minutes or doing this, or whatever, how long it took.
Sure, it, it is a functionality that could be included, this specifically, it was consciously decided not to, A, to keep it short. And we have the data on how long it took. Significant proportion of people took less than three minutes, which you would expect for, for just a few questions. But also the intention of this being baseline data, where we would then circle back with other conversations with principals, central office leaders to determine what the next steps would be, and it could be that further conversation focus groups, et cetera. Lot behind the, the data, the hard data.
Sure. I do believe administrators have student groups, at least at the high school level, Dr. Worley, that they meet with on a regular basis. And there's an opportunity to get that student voice in the school environment, where the students are used giving that voice on a regular basis. Do you want to speak to the, the role of the student advisory for each principal?
Good evening, yes, the schools, the principals at each school have, typically have their own student advisory board. And not only do they meet with that group, but they meet with groups of leaders throughout the school. Whether they meet with, you know, the, the band, or student athletes, or the SCA, and they have class leaders where there's leaders that represent a lot of different groups that come together and give feedback ongoing, you know, to teachers and leaders in the building, so that's kind of an ongoing thing throughout the year.
And that's one of the main ways that student voice organically happens in the school building, which is where you're going to get it. And we can certainly, if there, there's certain data points that we want to look at here and make sure that are explored through those groups.
I can question off of that, then, I, I'm interested as a board member to then understand what's being said in those meetings, because like, and how those meetings are facilitated. Because I, I would think back to my senior advisory, it was like our chill SCA teacher who just said, like, it was fifteen minutes, we just like hung out. We didn't really talk about much, so I, I just don't, I'm not saying it's happening here, but like, it was when I was in school, I just, it's like, I don't know how well off this data is or what is being said to us about that, and that's where I, again, ask the question of where is our student voice, how do we get to that? Like, not often do students come and comment to our article board, not often do we hear from students, and they're the, the reason why we're in this room. So I, I, I am going to petition that maybe in my comments later, that we do look into having a student representative, like, this is such an essential part that this day allows for us, other divisions have, and the results in which, you know, we kind of think about our job differently because this student is present in this room, so. Yes, my question is, what is, like, what, what is coming from this meeting, because we don't talk about it, this is the first time I've heard of this. And I've sat on the student advisory committee, I didn't even know we had our own separate things, right, like, so it's like, at what point does the board get recognition of, like, what is being said in those meetings, you know?
Well, the, the, the role of the principal with the student in a school and building school culture is very much administrative in, in nature. The board committee is a separate entity, they don't, they're not, they're not one and the same. And every high school principal across, I'm sure across the state of Virginia probably has such a group, because that's the norm to tap right into the voice of the student in the school environment. It's like our teacher forums for me. It, it's teachers I don't get to see and hear from on a regular basis every single day, but if I have twenty-two, or sorry, thirty-two teachers across the system that can speak directly to me, that, that's principal advisory group within a school does something similar. Where you get that direct voice from students, plus they're there every day, they're talking to students every day. That's where we know what students are thinking and hearing and what they need within their, with their educational environment.
So I just don't see that answering the question, I did, you're like saying or suggesting that there is a point where that does happen, but at what point, I know it's not our role as a school board to be in every of those meetings, I get administrative versus governance, and, you know, I, I wouldn't be sitting here if I didn't, but I'm to a point of like, this is a survey in which we want to build improvements from. Like, how do we get to the point where we know what to improve, right, like, that's where I'm at as a board member, and it's, it's kind of frustrating when I keep hearing like answers that are not towards, like, we'll get to the point where we do that, like, I understand that, but like, time's ticking, like, we got, you know, people have, if they're in school now. What do we can, is it next fall, like, that's kind of the thought I have, when, as I sit here.
Yeah, well, I, I think we're going to literally bring this to principals this Thursday, they're going to go back and speak to their students. It's going to be part of that advisory committee. If there's issues in particular schools that we need to deal with, there'll be a plan put in place. I mean, what, what you said was absolutely right, Mr. Riffle, there's, there's governance and there's administration. And a lot of the, the reactions to this will happen administratively. And then we bring that data, when we do this survey again, next year, we'll be accountable to the board to say, well, what did you improve? And how did you do it, and that will be part of our, our presentation, some of the actions we'll present in the spring. But then the data will speak for itself as we go out and do another survey next year. And even encouraging students to, to, to speak out and, and have a voice through this survey. But certainly, we believe in student voice as well, it is extremely important. And, and couldn't agree with you more from wanting to hear from students, things that we can do to make their lives and make them more successful in school.
Will principals, will principals be getting data from their individual schools?
Yes, ma'am.
That's, yeah, correct.
So, so perhaps in this, in the spring or in, in the fall, we'll, we'll get some sense of this, this is what came out of conversations after the first survey. These were the areas that were identified as needing improvement, and here's where we are.
Absolutely, yeah. And because that'll be, we feed back to the board again at the end of the year on our strategic goals. This is a point in time where we're going to use this data and work with it and address any deficiencies, deficiencies that there are in this data. Because we want to do that immediately, so that we survey next year, perhaps it'll look a little bit different. But overall, we were very encouraged by the positive data from staff and families and students. It was incredibly encouraging, and it was roughly about thirty percent, that's a significant percentage of our, of our recipients.
I'll just say one more quick thing, you know, as a parent, I was excited to participate in the, in the survey when I got it. Both my kids were really excited to participate, so I just wanted to reiterate the positivity of the activity. And thank Ms. Walls and, and everyone here who, you know, pushed that out to staff, families, and students, it is a, is huge effort to get participation. And again, you know, the fact that fifty-three percent of our students responded. I just wanted to point, and I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that we will get a report this spring. So that was something that just wanted to clarify, so. And then, just real quick, and I'm sure that there'll be, I, I'm very confident that there will be, as you said, student voice, and they'll be digging into why the responses were the way they were. And, you know, I trust the principals to, to engage with their students. So I'm looking forward to hearing that in the spring. I guess, just very quick sort of observation. I did just want to express, I felt like the percentages for students feeling like they were aware of safety. And then students feeling that they were safe, they seem to be, they were at seventy-six percent, so, so signif- it felt significantly lower than some of the others. And so that was something that I was like, oh, I would like to know why our students were feeling that way. And I'm sure that that's going to come out to us, but it's just something that I wanted to point out, I felt like the others, like, of course, we, we, our goal here is ninety percent. Maybe even higher, that would be awesome, but if our baseline for students feeling aware of safety, students feeling safe is seventy-six percent, that feels like a bigger gap than some of the other survey results, so.
But just to piggyback on that, how many were elementary, how many of those were middle, and how many were high?
I think that would be interesting.
That would be very interesting to me.
Ask more question, Ms. Walls. Is there like a form in which we understand that like, they fill the data out too quickly, like, is it like, there's, this is an outlier, like, they did it in seven seconds? It's like a flip through it, is, is there like an account for how the data was collected in that way?
For, not that I have dug into, but we can track how each, how long each response took and filter it out, if we feel that ten seconds is an adequate amount of time, or we could draw the line wherever and filter out. But that was not for this report.
Okay, everybody, good for now? Mrs. Donner, good? Okay, thank you, Ms. Wall.
It's the employee input process update?
Yep.
I'm going to introduce it, and then we'll ask Ms. Wall and Ms. Trot to take us through the slide presentation. The board may recall that in September and early October, administration shared an idea on how to gather specific feedback and data from employees in what we term the employee input sessions. We are proud that over five nights this fall, we were able to meet with employees from various job classifications and spend time with those employees, listening to their feedback. Ms. Wall is going to share with you what that engagement process looked like in terms of our advertising participants. Ms. Trot, we'll talk with you a little bit about the protocol that we utilized in order to engage with staff. And then we're going to share with you some themes that we heard that emerged through those conversations, and then talk about next steps. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, so as Dr. Kiefer alluded to, we hosted seven in-person employee input sessions, mostly in November with one at the end of October. The sessions were designed to engage employees with their peers by job category. And as Ms. Trot will describe later, the sessions were designed with in-person participation in mind so that participants could dialogue with one another and build off of that collaborative conver- conversation. However, recognizing that conflicts may exist for in-person participation, we did offer a virtual opportunity. While RSVPs were not required, we did request that employees consider doing so, so that we could plan facilitation staffing accordingly. We did welcome participants who hadn't RSVP'd, and we also missed some who did RSVP but weren't able to attend on the night of. Sixty-six instructional staff members RSVP'd and thirty-two participated in our in-person sessions. Fifty-seven support staff members RSVP'd and twenty-nine participated in our in-person sessions. Nine administrators RSVP'd and six participated. Nine administrators RSVP'd and six participated in our in-person sessions. And finally, twenty-eight staff members across job categories RSVP'd and nine participated in our one virtual session. So in total, seventy-six staff members or just under four percent of our employees participated in the employee input sessions. To ensure we were ready to facilitate the sessions, no matter the turnout, twenty-eight first facilitators participated in ninety-minute training. Prepared for their assigned session or sessions and engaged in the facilitated dialogue itself. Most of the sessions lasting the full ninety minutes with a few even going a little bit over that time. Um, with compilation and analysis of the collected data, more than a hundred staff hours were tallied in support of the employee input session process.
For each input session, we started with a whole group welcome with Dr. Heron, who shared the purpose and goals of hosting the sessions. Participants then transitioned to breakout rooms based on their roles in the division and engaged in a structured compass points protocol. Which was adapted from Harvard University's Project Zero Thinking Routine. The purpose of the protocol was to ensure every participant had the opportunity to have all their feedback, suggestions and questions captured. After the protocol, co-facilitators revisited participants' responses to the guiding questions and asked them to elaborate for deeper understanding. As participants engaged in discourse, the co-facilitators listened for emerging themes and took notes using the template that was provided. Each session concluded with the big three, where participants came to consensus on the top three themes or priorities. They collectively identified during their session. We asked them, what might we identify as the three big takeaways? We'd like our school board and senior leaders to put at the top of their to-do list. By using both convergent and divergent thinking routines, we were able to gather both individual and collective voice during the sessions. The compass points protocol sought feedback on four major discussion topics. First was job satisfaction and responsibilities, or what we do. Second was resource and support, which is what we need to do our jobs. Third was work environment and culture, which is where we do our work together. And fourth was communication and decision-making, how we engage in our work together. For each discussion topic, we had guiding questions that asked participants to consider the topic from various angles, which we called compass points. On the north side, they answered what needs improvement. On the east side, they answered what is exciting or working well that we need to continue. On the south side, they suggested innovative solutions or ideas. And on the west side, they provided questions or wonderings they have, which allowed us to identify concept and communication gaps. Here you can see a few examples of the compass point posters after participants finished rotating the room. For our virtual sessions, we created a digital format of the same protocol using Padlet. To ensure we accurately captured participant feedback, we asked our co-facilitators to immediately debrief. And discuss the notes that they entered into their session note-taking template. To ensure they accurately reflected the conversation and data points on their group's posters. Once the sessions concluded, an independent team reviewed each session's notes to look for themes specific to each employee group. Those were support employees, instructional employees and administrative employees. We also compared the big three consensus priorities that each group recommended. Finally, we reconvene the facilitators to share the emerging themes and seek deeper understanding of the types of examples that came up around those themes. As a result, we found several celebratory themes that transcended all employee groups. First, participants expressed how much their relationships with colleagues mean to them, including WJCC feeling like a family. They also shared how meaningful their work is in building relationships with students. And how everyone works together to focus on student growth and achievement. And finally, we heard repetitive appreciation for improvements in professional learning opportunities for all employee groups. And division-wide communication via the staff newsletter. Specific to our instructional groups consisting of mainly teachers, school counselors and specialists. Participants expressed five major areas for continuous improvement. The first theme is workload. We heard concerns about class sizes, IEP caseloads, challenges finding time within the workday. To complete competing priorities. The second theme was student behavior. However, this was more so focused on needing consistency. And tiered interventions and resources for students with repeat offenses or extremely disruptive behaviors. The third theme was compensation. This included salary as well as supplemental pay for additional roles they take on. The fourth theme is transparency and communication channels. Areas of opportunity included providing rationale for decisions. And ensuring clear and detailed information gets from central office to principals to teachers. The fifth theme was related to ensuring consistent opportunities for feedback and ensuring their input is received with follow-through. Participants expressed gratitude for the space to provide feedback via the input sessions. But would like to see that happen more frequently and potentially during contractual hours.
Specific to our support staff, which included roles like teacher assistant, special education aide and administrative assistants. We heard four areas for opportunity. First, a desire for greater role clarity and training specific to the defined role. And as it relates to staff new to the role, how can they be supported and mentored to be successful? Uh, two, connected to the previous point, opportunities for coordination and clarity across similar roles. And increased clarity and communication between employees and supervisors. Third, similar to the theme Ms. Trot shared from instructional staff, competitive compensation for the, for their position. And reflective of their work being done. And finally, concerns related to student behaviors, what additional resources may be needed to consistently support students' varying needs. Administrative participants' feedback centered on four major themes. First, needing more and varied resources for support, two examples of which were. Uh, analyzing data and adding personnel in high-needs areas and then being flexible to change as, as needed. Or offering targeted professional development for specific employee groups. Two, creating consistency of job expectations and/or updating job descriptions. So there's clarity across roles. And providing clarity on organizational structure. Three, specifically between employees and supervisors, developing consistent structures for formal evaluations. And informal check-ins and conversations. And then the final theme was twofold, one, to be receptive to trying new or innovative programs or practices. And two, when a new program or practice is considered, pilot the program first to identify strengths and opportunities. Before scaling to a larger implementation.
As we move into the next steps, I wanted to offer my deep appreciation for the facilitators who were involved across those. Nights and evenings, uh, specifically Ms. Wall and Ms. Trot for helping put us in a position to host those events. Also want to thank the participants for spending their time to join us and provide feedback. Earlier this evening, you heard the compensation study and clearly as we go into the budget process. Thinking about and looking at specific compensation pieces is a key priority for us and something that we heard across the various groups. Additionally, uh, we believe administratively that there is a need to convene some focus groups made up of staff members. That, that, within all three employee groups to look at. Three of the merging categories that came forward, student behavioral supports, transparent and collaborative communication systems. And then role clarity and organizational structure. Uh, it would be our goal to convene those groups in the months of January, February and perhaps even into March. To gather some specifics from that group or those groups around the categories that emerge from the employee input process. And then finally, it's incumbent upon each of us as we lead departments across the organization to look at the data and determine. What needs to happen next based on what we learned. Uh, again, it was a, it was a segment of our employee group that joined us over those evenings. But it's an important voice for us to be able to listen and to reflect on and make some decisions with respect to next steps. We're happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Board members, Mrs. Hunley, go ahead.
So starting on a positive note, um, I would like to thank the team. I know this was a lot of work for the few. Turnout. Um, I am a little disappointed with that, but my hope is possibly that. Some of the people that came maybe came with, um, suggestions from people that couldn't. Um, because I know the people that contacted me about it being during the evening when they had jobs and things like that or. Um, I, I suggested that they email their information and I'm not sure if that happened. Um, if anybody that couldn't be there emailed their concerns. Um, some of the things that I've, that I heard. Um, and that's probably on the sticky notes. When you say workload or class side or size or something, it's not really specific. As to what, um, what that is. For example, um, one thing that was, uh. Communicated to me would possibly be, uh, low-hanging fruit would be something like, um, being compensated for staying after hours if you don't have to. But nothing here says staying after hours or, or is that planning or it's hard for me to tease out what. If we're going to actually get to it, but I'm, I'm just going to assume those specific things are on the sticky notes for us to address.
I think also, Ms. Hunley, there is a, there is a full detailed report. What we try to do is to surface the, the emerging themes and share. With the board in total. Uh, so there are a couple pieces. One. Uh, all of the notes that were taken over the course of the sessions were put into a cumulative document that is available for the board. Uh, to be able to review, uh, to include also the artifacts and artifacts being the sticky notes in the Padlet presentation. So. That's all there, uh, and you, you'll, you'll be able to have access to that. But when I talked about next steps in terms of compensation and looking at things that we could address to. Help employees feel like they were being compensated appropriately for potentially what are considered to be additional duties. That would fall into that category as well.
Okay, so is, where, when will we get that or where is it?
You have it.
The materials and notes under the.
Okay, got you. Thank you. I don't see it, but I'll find it.
It's a hundred and five pages, so it's probably pretty comprehensive.
Be sure that you had all of the information that we collected, uh, addition, the, the notes from the facilitators. But also access to the specific language that the employee used when he or she put a sticky tab in the compass point.
Okay, thank you very much.
So everything's there and the, the conversation was very robust from a small number of people. Because seventy-six out of two thousand is not very representative, obviously. Um, but we are so grateful for those who did come because what they, they said was very important and, and there's a lot of. Information, a hundred and what pages?
Four hundred and five.
Hundred and five pages of, of information.
Not to include the pictures, which.
Okay. And the conversations were great and the feedback, uh, from those leaving the room. Said they really had an opportunity to talk very openly, which was wonderful, which is what our intention was and the protocol allowed that to happen.
Will the follow-up focus groups that you mentioned. Happen during contract hours and will they be open to anyone who wants to participate?
We're gonna need to put some structure to that. We, we know that we want to do some additional focus groups. Uh, the, the when and where needs to be determined. Uh, the, we have. I think a desire to broaden the net as wide as possible to continue to capture perspective and voice. Um, I, I would be a little bit remiss to commit to, it'll be at nine AM on the third Thursday of January. But I, we will develop a plan for that to ensue.
Uh, and certainly there may be some things like teacher behaviors or student behavior supports. We may actually invite. A group like Teacher Forum to start giving us more suggestions as well potentially, because it's another resource that's already there. Really would invite the, the board to, to read everything. And, and, and if, and, and if there's questions arising out of that or. Things you want to bring to the table, if you have SBQs or to give me a call. Then certainly, you know, read it, absorb it and then see, then we can talk about where administratively we'll, we'll go with it.
Was there, was there any theme, maybe not theme because we just heard them all, but was there any, were there any comments or anything raised that surprised staff?
Not really. I think student behavior is something we are consistently working on. Um, and so that will continue. Um, and compensation comes up every year and it's, we're, we're talking about it already. We've just had a huge study with a huge price tag tonight to start to address that. So that's already well within the board's line of sight to look at and respond to, in response to this.
Um, how much of the sort of extra job responsibilities that's. Or staying after or things that people are dissatisfied having to take on? How, how much of that, I don't, I don't know how you would quantify it, but it seems to be dependent on transportation issues.
Generally at this school, I'll have, um, Mr. Walker and Dr. Worley speak to this, especially elementary students where it impacts most. From my understanding, it's mostly teacher assistants who stay after school. Who then check out later under PED for doing that. But if you would, if there's anything else you want to add, Mr. Walker, I don't think that is an issue.
I know different teams at the elementary schools tend to take that role on different grade levels will stay up to a certain point. And of course then administrators will, uh, let them go because they realize they have to do lesson plans, grade papers and so forth. Um, but teacher assistants and so forth can't just clock out on, um, overtime.
Just one real quick question. When you say student behavior, could you describe that or explain it a little bit?
Do you want to speak to some of the comments in the, in the focus groups?
Mm-hmm. I'd be happy to. Mainly the theme for student behavior was focused on needing consistent consequences. The other was students who demonstrate extreme behaviors repeatedly, needing some higher level supports and interventions for them.
I've got to ask Dr. Brown maybe to speak to some of the work that is happening in every single school right now. As you know, we've been walking our way back from the pandemic and making great inroads in this area, but I know there's still work to do. Dr. Brown?
Over the summer, Department of Student Services met with each school individually to look at their behavior data from the previous year and then set year-long goals. Um, there's a definite trend at elementary compared to secondary. Um, s- addition, in addition to that, we were meeting with each school at the end of each quarter individually to talk about their behavior data. And not only what the trends show, what type of supports that they need. Specific to elementary, we continue to see requests for addressing students that. Have more immediate behaviors, um, that maybe the entire school day is challenging for them. Uh, so we're, we're looking at that and potential next steps. At the secondary level. Is the continued look at expansion of non-traditional programs. So it is. Uh, specific at a high school when we have students who perhaps are repeat ninth graders. Who are not achieving that success, what opportunities do we have for them? Students that are continuously demonstrating behaviors in, inside and outside the classroom. Are there other opportunities or supports that we can provide to them? So we're continually analyzing that. Uh, I just shared with senior leadership kind of our takeaways. We're meeting with principals on Thursday about that. But then we'll be continuing these quarterly meetings with each school to address those needs and then also talks about programmatically what we can do to, to help support these students.
And I know it's been an ongoing concern of the board and, and some of the, the behaviors at the elementary are still mostly happening. Uh, kindergarten through second grade until students begin to readjust and become used to the school environment. And so we are going to be bringing as part of our budget discussion, the possibility of having a, a position at every elementary school. That would be supporting specific behavior at certain grade levels. Extreme behaviors as identified in the employee input process as well. So there'll be lots of things to consider. I, I will say upfront, it'll be impossible to do it all. But the board, we're going to bring those ideas to the board to, to, to. Respond to your priorities as well as, as a board and, and then have you reflect and, and weigh in on, on what we can ask for this year.
Mrs., I just have one more thing. Um, as far as the breakouts, um. I guess one thing I heard is some discussions were like for elementary, but the, didn't really apply to middle school or maybe middle and not high. So maybe the next go round, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we actually set it up to be invited by level, but we didn't have enough. Yeah, we we actually set it up to be invited by level, but we didn't have enough people.
That's what it was.
We would have had one in a room and we didn't want to do that and we couldn't use the protocol. So we had one group, we once secondary group walking out and saying it was all about elementary. But they were very, they did, it was new information for them and so everybody heard the same thing, but everybody had a chance to to speak, just there wasn't enough. There weren't enough people there.
All right.
Unfortunately.
And we did try to keep hom homogeneous groups whenever possible.
I have a quick follow up question to the student behavior. Do we see the extreme behavior in um, bright beginnings as well? And do we or do we see less of that extreme behavior in K through two from bright beginning students?
Um, yes, there are the behaviors, but in most bright beginnings classrooms, we have at least two aids. And some of the classrooms where those behaviors are are taking place where students are beginning to assimilate and and gain some level of of uh, control. Um, there's even discussion that senior letter leadership even today about the the need for a counselor, bright beginnings to begin work at that level. Before students get into kindergarten.
Do we see some of those behaviors exhibited in bright beginnings continue on in K through two? Or or does it actually stem some behavior, kids who have gone through bright beginnings, do they have fewer issues once they get come into school?
I don't know that I can answer that, Mr. Walker specifically, um, that's.
I'm just curious if the exposure to the school environment helps or if it doesn't make a difference or if it has to do with maybe certain circumstances that are coming.
I think I think it helps dramatically because if you look at some of the outcomes of bright beginnings, they're measured not just in academic progress, progress, but also in behavior. Do you want to speak to that and that the assessment we do every year of kindergarten?
Can't quote those numbers right off the top of my head um, with that question, but I would say qualitatively, yes. This, the bright beginnings program makes a huge difference for our students and kindergarten readiness and coming forward. Do some of those potential behaviors carry over and can or ensure they do? Um, I think those students are well equipped. If they had not been in in a pre K setting, it it would be in a different boat. To start kindergarten, so I think it's definitely helpful and in some cases the challenges continue. And we're also transitioning from a half day program, four hours to a full school day and that in itself is challenging.
Um, not all of our students have the opportunity to attend a pre K. We've only got under four hundred spots. Dr. Brian, I don't know if you want to add anything because over sixty percent of our pre K is special education.
Yeah, I I the the program of right beginning, this is absolutely crucial. And I would say without that, it would really be something that um, would be concerning. I was gonna talk about the transition to a full day and that the stamina that requires for a kindergarten student sometimes is a point of emphasis and how we support these students. Specific to IEPs, uh, a large portion of right beginnings is special ed. And so what's crucial is that transition from the services provided in the pre K setting to kindergarten and how that impacts the IEP. So there's transition meetings that are held during the spring with parents, um, with the receiving school and bright beginnings to determine what's most appropriate. Over the course of the summer, moving into the fall, we do see the need for updated IEPs. Um, even though there's a great plan in place, we see the student demonstrating behaviors we hadn't seen previously or the need for increased support. So perhaps they're doing better than we anticipated and IEPs are updated throughout the fall.
Any last questions before we move on?
All right, thank you. I'm just first, I'm thankful for the opportunity that we presented here. I I I'm curious about the support, um, we mentioned support a couple of times in both of like I mean a couple of themes. Um, is it like support like personnel, is it like support like process, is it, and I of course, I'm gonna go do my two hundred and six pages of reading. You know, when when a break starts, but uh, I just like general idea like, cause I think as we come to the budget process, like things that we can control is like. Oh, we should be thinking about support staff, like is this the way that we kind of pivot, you know, and we kind of bargain this year and do this and that. Sorry, I shouldn't do the bargain, um, but yes, you know what I'm saying and then that kind of context.
Yeah, and the short answer is yes, all of the above and it would, I'd encourage you to look at the hundred plus pages because that's. That will tease out the nuance of in some cases, yes, it is personnel, physical people to support various needs. In some cases, it's uh, targeted professional development that relates specifically to the employee's job category. One example was nurses, um, and sometimes it's things, materials that are the supports that are that have been requested.
Then I I don't know if it's in the hundred and six pages, but again, um, how, what is the general sentiment about like the the new uh, English? Uh, was it was it brought up at all about how like the structure of bringing in the new curriculum and stuff like that this year? I just I just think that's something we should think about as we implement, the things are going to be coming down the pipe from the state government. And then we're gonna clearly get new standards in which that stuff is judged. So I just think a lot of the, you know, we're constantly not in a vacuum here, um, but was there any thoughts on that?
There were a few comments about the new benchmark advanced program. There are a lot more comments about needing additional resources for math.
Well, lucky for them, that's okay, it's changing, the state will re bring in a new standard for math um, within the next four years. So it's, I I'm interested to see how that comes about. I just wanted to know, I just the perspective I have and what I'm for work and then doing this, it's it's kind of everyone's talking was like, what is happening? Kind of like, what can we do now here now? So so thank you for all that.
And I think the board had asked when we implemented the the new resources for ELA, for literacy. You all asked at that time, what are we doing for math? Is there a core curriculum for math and we do don't have one and we're actually reviewing that right now.
All right, Mrs. Donner, you're you're good. Well, thank you, thank you all very much. I know that was a huge undertaking that was board board directed and and quite quickly, short turnaround. So thank you very much for all the hard work from the people who are in this room who did it and and for all the other people who are not in this room. We we greatly appreciate it. All right, one more discussion topics, item six point zero five. Button topic, redistricting request uh, for proposal for uh, scope.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, Dr. Keever is going to present the potential uh, ideas for an RFP for redistricting of the scope of redistricting.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, as we inch ever closer to breaking ground on the pre K buildings. Uh, we understand that there will be a need for the school division to redistrict to take advantage of the space that is gained. As the students move from the pre K classrooms and the five elementary schools into the two centers. We believe that we should utilize the services of a of a consultant that does redistricting studies and makes recommendations. We are positioned to release a request for proposal as early as tomorrow in order to get that process started. The one question that we really wanted feedback from the board on is the the broad nature of the scope of that request. Clearly, we know that elementary schools will need to be looked at with respect to redistricting. Administratively, we might recommend that we ask for um, respondents to the RFP to give us. The pricing for what it would cost to look at elementary or what it would look to, what would it cost for elementary middle? What would it cost for elementary middle and high? The reason that we would do that is because part of our challenge in terms of efficiency and operations with respect to transportation is a. Is predicated on some of our attendance boundaries. And if we looked at those attendance boundaries and could maximize operational efficiency through a rezoning. It may be something that you wish to consider. Without asking for that information in the RFP process at the very beginning, we can't reach back into the process at the end. So the the purpose of the discussion tonight is just to gauge your support for being as broad as possible in the request for proposal. And then as we go through that process narrowing that down, if the board feels like that needs to be narrowed.
Thank you, Dr. Keever. Um, thoughts from board members?
So if I could clarify, the board could ask for just elementary, a price, a price for elementary and middle, a price for elementary, middle and high. And so if we write it in that way, we can get all three priced differently and then that would come back to the board.
And if and if we ask for two or all three, that does not mean we are absolutely going to redistrict all three or however many we ask for. It just means that we have the information at the outset, correct?
That's right.
Um, I'll just go start with you, Mrs. Hunley, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I was I was getting ready to say I would be interested in hearing from transportation, they're the ones that have tire on the ground. What what do they see that might help facilitate the shortage of of drivers? And they know the count, they know those roads, they, so I would be curious to see what they thought would be the best.
What we will do with the board at the next two by one is show you the boundary maps and revisit those with you. But what happens now is bus drivers, students are transported from one school to another across another school's boundaries. And so if you change the boundaries, there's less distance to travel on the bus, which is more efficient and therefore you need less bus drivers to do it.
Mr. Hoseng, do you have any thoughts on it on the?
I was just curious, I know there's, we have, I'll I'll say serious issues on ele- elementary schools. So that's come probably gonna be our big focus. Do we have similar issues with our middle and high schools?
Are you talking about capacity?
Capacity.
Not necessarily, no, based on the the enrollment information that was shared and then the projections, not necessarily. I think that you you will have capacity that you need to fill at the elementary level for sure, that yes. But I don't think you have capacity issues per se at middle and high school. What you what we do have are boundaries that intertwine and cross over, which then create a lack of. A zoned pattern, feeder elementary schools into middle schools and high schools. There there is not that kind of scenario in our community right now, based on the way that the the attendance boundaries are drawn.
And if I could give a little bit of historical context, when James Blair Middle School was brought online, the school board redistricted. Uh, because we had to, we had to divide from three schools into four. And um, one of the criteria that was used by the former board was socioeconomic status to balance the schools. Uh, generally speaking, one of the key criteria in redistricting is distance from the school. And so the board, if you choose to revisit middle school, you would be choosing most likely the criteria distance to the school. The distance the child would travel to the school. So it will look very different and it would change the criteria that was used the last time around. But um, we didn't have the transportation challenges at that moment in time that we have now. And so there's just a bigger picture for the board to consider as we walk into this this process. The other piece you really would have to consider when considering middle school is children have been redistributed already. In a fairly short time ago, three, four years ago. And so um, that would be a consideration as well. But I think what we're all we're asking for now is is really your your guidance and getting the numbers, seeing what it would cost. The board doesn't have to make that decision today, the bigger one, just do you want information about what it would cost for all the options?
So redistricting isn't just for a school population. It's also to see transportation wise, what what might be feasible where we can save money on the transportation costs.
Well, we look, we look at capacity and we look at where students currently go to school. Like, for example, in Stonehouse, there's going to be redistricting south because Stonehouse is full. So we're looking at first of all, school capacity, distance from the school. But if we were to redistrict more than elementary, we could impact the drive to school for many students. So for example, students are transported now from uh, the James River area to James Town High School. And they cross over another school boundary on the way. Our current system is not efficiently.
What are, do you have any thoughts on the the request for proposal itself, wanting to, would you want to see the options for all three?
Definitely.
Mr. Riffle?
I was as well, I think this is something that I would want to see the most out of for. I'm also very excited for this this portion of the job because it's a it's a fun, I don't know, we had this exercise in college and it's exciting to do it in full practice. There's actually like a puzzle that I do like once a month, but um, anyways, I'm I'm it's just it's just more something that like, I think this is something that people talk about a lot. Like this is the thing when you heard when you're at people's doors or things like that throughout the campaigns or whatever you all did. It's like people were like, this is the thing that they're kind of upset about was like, that was the thought was like you're going through other boundaries. So um, I don't think we're gonna redistrict high schools from this thing, but I I think it's important for us to understand that in a context of what we're doing. And I want to help Mr. Slimes as much as I can, because I think it it is, it is a struggle to hear from. I spoke to a bus driver uh, the other day and she was like, this is happening to me and it's just how it works in her job. And I'm I'm like, well, this, I don't really know what what I could do as a board member and it's just like, it feels like this is the most powerful thing for them is like to help save her and her colleagues' time. And and that make their day feel better. So I know our students, of course, can go to school that's near them, like I think it's maybe the problem we have with our uh, on transportation zones at one point. Where we had to start thinking about that problem, so to try to remove those things is is important for me as a board member. So so thank you for the ask of this and um, this is very transparent, so so thank you.
So all three then?
All three, yeah.
Ms. Chen?
I agree, all three.
How much, um, is the information from the high schools really gonna impact your decision for redistricting and how you do it?
To me, it's about what it would cost in order to consider rezoning at the high school level. I've I don't have an opinion one way or the other on that. My my opinion is that the board would want the the cost pieces for each of those three puzzles to decide. We want to look at the entire thing or we're gonna focus our efforts only at elementary because we know that's where the capacity issues are are most pronounced.
Right now, we're just requesting pricing.
No, I understand, I understand what we're asking, I'm, because I'm think, I'm, if you really think that all three pieces are gonna be important and the way you're gonna then plan, then I think we need all three.
I think we can look at the potential time savings and run, number of runs or routes savings at all three levels. When the board is in the place to decide how much to redistrict, then we would have more information for you at that time. So you'd make an informed decision.
Mrs. Donner, what are your thoughts?
Uh, proceed with getting estimates for all three, so we have more information needed as we make decisions.
I I agree.
Thank you.
All right. Getting on to our action items for the evening. First one is seven point zero one, approval of personnel actions, can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve personal actions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hoseng?
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Kabasos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner? Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Seven point zero two, approval of minutes from November nineteenth twenty four, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the meeting on eleven nineteen twenty four as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Kabasos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner? Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Approval of minutes from uh, December second, special call meeting at nine AM, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the special call meeting on twelve two twenty four at nine AM as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Kabasos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Item, uh, seven point zero four, the minutes from special call meeting also on December second at five PM, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the special call meeting on twelve two twenty four at five PM as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Chen.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner? Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Kabasos?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from the special call meeting on uh, twelve four twenty four, please, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the special call meeting on twelve four twenty four as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Kabasos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
An approval of uh, the minutes from uh, twelve. An approval of uh, the minutes from uh, twelve six twenty four joint meeting. Is there a motion?
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'm approved, I'm sorry, I'm moved to approve the minutes from the joint meeting on twelve six twenty four as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Kavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng?
I abstain.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
That was a full school board week. Item seven point zero seven, approval of purchase request to Optech to support the renovation at Lafayette High School nine hundred building. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the purchase request to Optech under annual contract number twenty one dash one five zero one nine. To support the renovation of the Lafayette High School nine hundred building for a total amount of a hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, one hundred ninety-six.
Second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Chen, and thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner? Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Kavazos?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Item seven point zero eight, approval of the FY twenty six through thirty-five superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the FY twenty six through thirty-five superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Chen.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Kavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
And finally, item seven point zero nine, the reason for all of our special call meetings. Um, approval of award of contract for request for proposal number two zero two five zero four four zero. Superintendent Executive Search Services. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the award of contract for request for proposal. Um, number two zero two five zero four four zero. Superintendent Executive Search Services to Ray and Associates in the amount of twenty-three thousand plus advertising expenses and travel expenses. In accordance with WJCC travel policy and the associated budget transfer of thirty-seven thousand from instructional salaries. And benefits to administrative contract services.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Alright, we are moving right along on to board member comments. Mrs. Hunley, can I start with you?
Okay, um, V S B A was very, um, I, I really enjoyed it. It, for people that are listening, that's kinda like how we, where we go for our professional development. All three keynote speakers were awesome. Um, this one gentleman we had um, seen at our national convention. He paints, but he also tells, you know, tells a story. And um, and then he gives away some of his paintings, but um, his name is Sam Glenn. This quote, I just love this quote. It, it says, "Life can be messy, but within every mess is a masterpiece. You just need the right at- attitude to uncover it." And, and he has a picture of a, um, tree and then you can see where it's all messy down in the roots. And I just think we need to, um, we're gonna be going through a lot in these next couple of months. And so our attitude has to definitely be on children and, and not the mess, but the masterpiece. Second, um, it was great to go to War Hill High School's um, ribbon cutting ceremony for their auxiliary gym. And um, I didn't know until I went that it's going to also um, be a shelter for, um, for if we have a natural disaster. Families can go and bring their pets and um, it's, it's, um, that was new information to me. And what winds the roof can withstand. And then speaking of wrestling, I did go to see one of my former students wrestle in a tournament. And um, there were a lot of girls now. And so we, I mean, I had never seen a girl wrestle other than on TV. So when I saw, you know, girls wrestling guys, that was new to me. But um, they were in the same weight class and one girl, she, she pinned this guy um, from Jamestown. She was obese. But um, there were enough, there were like, one, one school had sixteen girls. So in the future, we're gonna have our own girl wrestling teams. Right now, you know, there may be far a few, but um, that was just very interesting to me. And then every, I know it's been exciting going to the different musical concerts and the jazz and, and things like that. It just puts us in the holiday spirit. And another thing that put us in the spirit was the parade. And Dr. Heron and I walked with the W J C C School Foundation. My arm is still sore from holding that banner. It was heavy. We'd have three people to hold one banner. But that, just to see the kids when they saw their mascots from their school, they just got so excited. And some of the mascots, like Ram, the Ram, um, he did a good job. He got out of our group and he was high-fiving kids and just talking to kids. And um, it was, it was just a beautiful night and just a beautiful community event. And those are all my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Mr. Hoseng?
I don't have any comments for tonight except to say to all the students, the employees and the families out there to have a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And hopefully we'll all be back uh, next year um, to celebrate everything going on.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Mr. Riffle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first I wanna say thank you to Ship and our friends at Calorie Farms. It's such an awesome initiative that you all put on with that. And I, I'd actually heard about it from a neighbor, um, who received a ship bag and she was talking about how well the product, that just like the purpose, the purpose was. And I've visited Calorie Farms through, for my job and so I just think it's awesome that we have that kind of in our backyard. And you can go, you know, pick apples and touch tomatoes or whatever you do in farms. Um, and it's just an awesome thing to have here. I went to Jazz Night yesterday, which was so cool. Um, I, I'm, I'm a, just, I just liked going to Jazz when I was in high school. I did a little bit of it when I was around there. But I, uh, I'm just impressed by them keeping Jazz alive. Like there was a lot of big band starts and a lot of heavy brass screaming and large trombones. So we had a low, little bo- low boy, little drummer, which was pretty sick. This is a lot of like context to Jazz, but it's, it's, it is, it's just awesome to see our musicians and the talent that goes across our division and those programs. So just a thank you to those staff and guidance counselors. They said about that last night, but it does take a lot of work to get those students to kinda learn percussion one and percussion two. They do this and that, you know, it is, is a hard thing to kinda navigate music and of course, the, the curriculum that we require us here in the division. Every student can't be a rock star and not know math, you know, they have to be both. So um, I also went to the ribbon cutting, which was fun. Um, and that was, that was awesome in the, the conference. Um, and I'd like to just spend the last moment of my comments just saying thank you to the board and, and I'm excited for what's to come about. And I'd like to maybe, maybe say, give like a randy report, like what I'm excited about for next year and what we could hear about, you know, in the future. I, I, I requested a presentation that I'm, I'm somewhat excited about and I think our board is maybe tired of hearing about individually. But I, I, I'm a big, you know, I think it goes into the ship initiative we talked about earlier, which is kinda moving towards a, like, or this farm to table meal. And that be a pilot, um, and I know Dr. Heron is writing it down again, but it is, is something I, I'm very passionate about. I think our students need um, better meals and I think we have a budget for it. And I think the state and the federal government will be thinking about um, nutrition moving forward. Um, and I think we want to get ahead of the curve in that. Um, I'm excited to think about lacrosse coming onto the sport. I know that's maybe an eerie subject for many people in the room, but I think it's important to bring on these new subjects and things that our students and our community are asking for. And it really takes us as board members to like, ask other boards if they're gonna implement those type of sports too. Like how can we kind of work as a region to kinda make this up better? So I think it's just as much as on our staff as it is our job to kind of communicate to other neighboring boards, like you should make a push for this, you should do this stuff too. So I'm, I'm not leaving this out. I think this is the, the part of reflection we had at the, we had the V S B A thing to do. And I don't know, I didn't submit mine, but I, I was definitely working on it at work today and then I did other stuff. But um, and then I am excited to potentially look at the student rep stuff. I know we have a meeting tomorrow with some of our, the student advisory things. I'd, I, I, I think that our community and it is such, if, you know, going to the concerts and the stuff I've done this past year. Our students are so good at like, leading their community and kinda telling us how to, to best serve them. And so I'm excited for that, that potential and how we as a board can invite someone or multiple students um, in rotation or whatever that may look like. To, 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 to serve with us and, and kinda give voice, 'cause I think it's always important as we saw in the surveys. And, and, and they're there every day and they're, they're very honest. And we ask questions in our meetings and stuff all the time and they are very truthful. They're like, this, this sucks, this is good, this is whatever, like, I mean, today was horrible. And they got in the school, like they're just very honest and, you know, that's what I appreciate as, as a student myself. And, and as somebody who like, knows that this is a place where we can, we have to constantly improve, no matter how good that those little statistics come back to us in, in the future. So I'm excited. I know it's a lot to do and it's not like we didn't do anything this year. So I wanna say thank you to all the hard work that's gone into this and the process ahead, 'cause it's gonna be exciting and, you know, new to all of us. And um, especially redistricting, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I don't know, these words just kinda scare maybe some people in the public. And I just think it's exciting to have like that opportunity to, to be here and to serve with my members and, and the strong staff we have here in central office. And, and of course, everyone in their individual buildings and that type of work. So, so thank you for indulging us this year and then we're excited to do it again next year and, and probably keep, keep pushing forward. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Ms. Chen?
Well, I guess I'm, I'll start by saying that um, the board members, that we came on together, the four of us. We've made it through a year of, of school board meetings. So it has definitely been a year of um, great learning and growth. And um, realizing and appreciating, knowing going into this, the importance of this seat and the privilege of the seat. But really getting so much perspective this year and I have so much respect for all of you. And it's really been a privilege to serve with everybody. Um, and thank you, Ms. Ordigo, for leading us. And thank you, Dr. Heron as well, um, and everybody here in, in leadership. So yeah, thank yous all around. Yeah, so I don't wanna reiterate the, the, what was already said. Um, I, I agree with everything about the conference. The War Hill High School Auxiliary Gym, um, some additional things I'll mention um, that are upcoming. Uh, the Sleigh Bell Race is on Saturday morning, so if you wanna bundle up um, and join me, um, we can cheer on our students. Um, the proceeds, I believe, go to Hope Ship Club. Um, so it is a big community event. The Sleigh Bell Race is at Jamestown High School this year. Um, I think it starts at eight. There's running, there's walking. So there's, uh, there's even a virtual option. So you can participate and, and donate in all sorts of ways. And speaking of sort of just school collaboration, um, you know, it was great to see all the marching bands. They're definitely been busy. They had that marching band and the um, the parades and then the jazz concerts. So that's like all the high schools together, which is always really exciting when they do those collaborations. And then um, we also have a lot of holiday concerts coming up. So even though our meeting today is our last one for December, there's a lot of exciting events coming up. Um, so hopefully we'll continue to connect. And I'll just end by saying that um, you know, I'm looking forward to wishing everybody uh, safe. And um, happy holidays, uh, Happy New Year. And then when we come back in January, um, I'm looking forward to doing whatever we can to make sure that, you know, our decisions about policy and budget. And from a leadership standpoint, to really just focus on that big goal that we set in our strategic plan. With every, focusing on every student, um, and helping them reach their greatest potential.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Dr. Kavazos?
I'll be kinda short, um, but first of all and foremost in my mind, um, we've been kinda going after this lacrosse thing for a year now. But I was glad to hear that there's some ground swell. There was some money put away for reason, turfing Cooley Field. So I guess, you know, there's twenty-seven thousand dollars in the budget, 'cause we were gonna spend fifty for that search, but we only spent twenty-three. So there's twenty-seven thousand out there. So we're on a roll, good, thank you very much. So um, I, 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 I also wanna say, I, I'm absolutely, I'm so excited about the fact. And very happy to be with, with employees in the um, division. When they responded um, to um, the W J C E A and coming up with this employment input sessions. That was, that's a phenomenal task. And I know that took a lot of effort. And it's just clearly a, an indication of their dedication and their responsiveness. And I'm surrounded by a lot of professional people and it makes our jobs very, very easy. Um, because I really feel comfortable that the information that's coming to us is very accurate and it's very thought out. It already has, but sorry, I think we're, they already know what's gonna happen and all that, you know, that, it's just so, so professional. I was disappointed that we didn't get any, we met with our funding partners and unfortunately I didn't hear any hints, you know, like Jerome Powell, nothing, nothing happened. But I, hopefully they'll see where we're going. Um, and finally, once and for all, um, Merry Christmas to all and Happy New Year. And everybody have a safe, safe weekends, safe holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kavazos. Uh, Mrs. Donner from afar?
Uh, thank you. I uh, had the opportunity, I feel like it's Thanksgiving was so long ago, but we haven't chatted since then. I had the opportunity to go to Matthew Whaley and their thanks, their annual Thanksgiving feast. Which is an amazing experience. Our cafeteria uh, head chef, Ms. Vega, she, or Ms. Vega Brown, she does the most amazing food. And to watch her serve Thanksgiving dinner to all of the students in Matthew Whaley, plus their families, or at least their parents. Was um, was wonderful. And to just sit at the caf- in the cafeteria for me with a bunch of fifth graders and listening to their conversations. I think also just watching how um, you know, kids that are from diverse backgrounds, sitting together, um, engaging with each other. There was a student there who was one of our English language learners and watching as the kids, his friend translated for him what the kids were saying. And then him, inhering him chime, chime in, in places as well. Um, it's just kind of what we're here to do. There's so much learning that happens in the classroom, but also that happens outside. I also had the opportunity to volunteer and they asked um, folks to come in and cover lunch. So our teacher assistants to give thanks to them so they could have some time away. And I was exhausted for kindergarten lunch and fifth grade lunch. And let me tell you, ten minutes into kindergarten lunch, I had never opened so many ketchup packets, so many jellies. Give kids tissues, how, I mean, so much, there was, that hands were constantly raised. And so, you know, we think about what these roles are and as we just had the conversation about compensation. These are, our support staff work really, really hard and they are just so giving to our students. And so as a parent to just experience that for ten minutes and I was looking at the clock of when that shift was over. And that this is something that they do day in and day out for all those lunch periods. Um, we really need to look at how we are compensating them and, and honoring not only the work that they do. But um, you know, making sure that we're paying what is, what is a fair wage and a market wage for them. So I think I, I would take Dr. Kavazos twenty-seven thousand and put it towards our support staff. But um, the other thing is, the um, and just uh, the other part is, on, you know, it's some, we're talking about behavior. And, and in our elementary school, I think the other wonderful thing was to be in the room with those fifth graders. And watching where the kindergartners are very needy, where the fifth graders were helpers. And I watched students help our custodian clean the tables. They, you know, they engage in that process. Like, you know, kids spilled stuff, they, they swept up after themselves. And so to really see how they are contributors to their community and how they um, take ownership and pride in their lunchrooms. And in helping out and so, and so watch our custodians sit and have a conversation with different kids. And how, again, it's really important, it's not just our faculty, it's the engagement of everybody in the building from those bus drivers. When they first get them on the bus through our custodians that are really engaging with different kids. 'Cause every kid's gonna meet um, and connect with some, an adult differently. And so the more adults that we have in tho- those buildings that can really connect with our kids, I think it's just really important. Other than that, I am, uh, we made it as a year as a board, so, woo, went down. Looking forward to what happens next year. Um, and especially as it's, it's, um, as we also start looking towards the community engagement. It is really hard to, you know, we have one, only one more board meeting left with Dr. Heron. And, and what that means, but also looking towards kind of the future and how we fill those shoes. And making sure that we've got community engagement as we start to make those decisions. So I'm really excited about our um, solidifying the search firm and that will allow us to start to move forward. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. I will pick up where Mrs. Donner just le- left off. I wanted to reiterate in case it was not clear. Um, as we were approving a series of action items that, that our board did in fact pick a search firm um, last week. I wanna thank all of my board colleagues for being part of that process. There, there were a lot of meetings and a lot of things to review and, and it felt overwhelming at first. But we, we did manage to emerge with a unanimous decision and we were quite unified. And so um, while we are sad that we're inching ever closer to Dr. And so um while we are sad that we're inching ever closer to Dr. Heron's departure. I'm I'm very happy that we managed to move move this process along as quickly and as efficiently, but also as thoughtfully as we have. Um the search firm will, I'm sure, hit the ground running. And the community can expect to have a series of um stakeholder engagement meetings that will be available. Um different places, different times to target different groups, we we want to hear from our community. We wanna hear from from as many people and as many different populations in our community um as we can. And of course, our s- our staff and students. So this is really a um a large community endeavor that we are all embarking on together. And um this board is is very interested in what the community has to say. And uh so also wanna give a special shout out to Kitty Hall with James City County who guided us through that process. We were all novices and she walked us right through it and and she was very helpful, so thank you to her. I want to briefly mention that some some board colleagues have have brought to me as chair. The some of the comments we've heard about um James Blair Middle School and the evolution, wanting to know more about the evolution of. That name and different processes and so as chair, I am currently engaged in talking to different board members. To gauge uh positions and and interest in in that, learning more about that process. Um and then of course, like as has been said um a few times, congratulations on one, one year down to all of our. We can't call you new board members anymore, now we're, now you're all old board members. Like it's hard to believe that that's, your swearing in was a year ago this month, maybe even today, I don't know. Um and yeah, we made it a year, so congratulations, thank you for all your hard work, for all the collaboration. We've we've tackled a lot and we have a lot to tackle uh when we come back in January, so rest up. It's gonna be a fun year. And uh of course, happy holidays, um happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa. And if there's anything else that is celebrated, um happy that too, uh just have a safe and wonderful time um with your family. Enjoy time off if you are someone who's getting time off over Christmas. Thank you to our our senior leadership staff here for all of the support that you give us um as a board. Uh we are, we are very appreciative of everything you've done this past year, um especially with with us being a new board. New, everyone new in their positions, um I'm sure that posed some challenges or some some extra questions, but we appreciate all the, all the support. And um and of course, our clerk is always our. We're we're, we are big fans of Ms. Aller because we couldn't function without her, so hope you also have a wonderful, well deserved break. And yeah, I hope all of our students, teachers, staff, families. Um have a happy, safe um festive time for these next few weeks. And we look forward to reconvening in January and hitting the ground running with um lots of, lots of tough budget decisions. But um they're important and we we will tackle them together. Um I will move on to upcoming events. Special Education Advisory Committee will meet on January eighth. Uh in room one oh eight of the School Board and Central Office, oh at five PM in room one oh eight, School Board and Central Office. The annual Martin Luther King Junior Actso Award Luncheon, it will be on January twelfth twenty four at three PM. The Williamsburg Hellenic Center on Moretown Road. That, if you ever wanna feel like you haven't accomplished enough in your life. Those kids are amazing. Um the Career Ready Advisory Committee uh will take, will meet on uh January twenty second at three thirty PM. In room three hundred in the Annex uh the School Board and Central Office. Our next meeting will be on January seventh, it does say twenty twenty four, but I'm gonna go ahead and correct that and say twenty twenty five. It's hard to get used to, at four thirty PM um in room three hundred of the Annex. Um followed by closed session on January seventh twenty five at six PM in room three, same room three hundred of the Annex. Organizational meeting, work session and action items, also January seventh, starting at six thirty PM in room three hundred of the Annex. And then the next budget work session will be on January twenty first, uh twenty five, four thirty PM, room three hundred of the Annex. Followed by closed session at six PM in room three hundred of the Annex, also on the twenty first. And the regular meeting with pre-budget public hearing, January twenty first, starting at six thirty PM in the James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. Um our agenda items are set for the next regular meeting. And with that, this last meeting of the year is adjourned.